Okay, we're gonna get started. Baltimore City Council Ways and Means Committee, we're here for ordinance 24-0521, ordinance of estimates for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2025. I'm Mayor Costello, Councilman for the 11th District, Chair of the Committee. Starting at my far right, Council Vice President Sharon Green Middleton, 6th District Member of the Committee; Councilman Isaac Yitzhak Schleifer, 5th District Member of the Committee; Councilman Zeke Cohen, 1st District; Councilman Mark Conway, 4th District; Councilwoman Odette Ramos, 14th District; Councilman Chris Burnett, 8th District; to my immediate right, Marguerite Curran, Staff to the Committee. We're joined by Representatives from the Mayor's Office and the Council President's Office. We're here tonight for Baltimore Police Department, or BPD. Commissioner Worley, how much time do you anticipate needing for your presentation this evening?
Mine is probably five.
How long did you want to make it before I ask the question?
Five minutes.
Five to, so five, so 15 minutes total? Okay, excellent. Commissioner, I'm gonna turn it over to you in a minute. I'm gonna have you introduce everyone who's sitting in the Councilmember Chairs, who's gonna be testifying this evening, first and last name and position title, and then have you jump right into your presentation. After that, I'm gonna go over ground rules for the questions this evening. We're gonna run things a little similar to what we did last night, but with some enhancements to make it a little bit more efficient. So with that, Commissioner Worley, and you can testify at your seat if you want, I mean, you got a microphone, but if you want, whatever you're more comfortable with.
For your action.
And anyone who's testifying, you got two buttons at the bottom of your microphone setup. Hit the one on the right if you see the Commissioner, and my microphone, it's red. When it's red, you're live. When you've finished speaking, please turn it off.
I'm actually, well, I'm just gonna start off, I'm Commissioner Rich Worley. I'm gonna turn it over and let them introduce themselves, so I don't mess up any titles. So I'll start off with Erin Murphy.
Good evening, everybody. Erin Murphy, Director of Government Affairs for Baltimore City Police Department.
Soraya Fasay Deats, Budget Director.
Catherine Ely, Budget Analyst.
Good evening, Charlotte Graham, CFO, and as a recently Chief of Personnel Services.
Right one there. There you go.
Good evening, Nicholas Edwards, I'm Lieutenant Colonel of Area 1.
Yes, good evening, Lieutenant Nicholas Edwards, I'm Lieutenant Colonel of Area 1.
Hi, good evening, Jack Herzog, Lieutenant Colonel of the Citywide Investigations Division in CIB.
Good evening, Lieutenant Colonel Steve Homan, I'm one of the Deputy Chiefs in the Detective Bureau overseeing Specialized Investigation Division.
Good evening, it's Guy Thacker, Lieutenant Colonel for Area 3 and Special Operations.
Good evening, Atees Burkis, I'm Area Commander 2, Deputy Chief of Patrol, also Executive Oversight for Special Services Section.
Good evening, Brian Nato, Deputy Police Commissioner for the Compliance and Public Integrity Bureau.
Good evening, Azalee Johnson, Major of Recruitment at Oakland Investigation Division.
Pahini Lampart, Data Lead for Finance and Personnel Management.
Go ahead and start mine. Well, first of all, good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to present BPD's Fiscal Year 25 Budget. Also, thank you for your flexibility in scheduling this hearing. We introduced some of our members, and I think you know most of them. DC Jones is in Boston for three weeks with a Senior Management Institute in Policing Training. We only have one of our newest, I'm gonna introduce our newest executive team member, it's Lisa Reynolds. She's seated right here behind me. She's a deputy, she's gonna be the Deputy Chief of Juvenile Booking and Services. She comes to BPD after a 20-year career in the Department of Juvenile Services to help improve our juvenile policies, processes, and procedures, and to serve as a conduit to DJS and generally advise our officers. Should've probably had the mission statement somewhere else where I could've got to it sooner. The Baltimore Police Department is dedicated to upholding the Constitution, enforcing laws in a fair, impartial, and ethical manner. We commit to creating and maintaining the culture of service that builds trust and legitimacy in all communities, values the sanctity of human life, and provides for the safety and well-being of all. And then our two goals are the professionalization and recruitment and retention. And I'll move on to our crime. Well, I'm gonna go in a little bit to the rest of my speech a little bit. I wanted to go over some of the highlights of progress that we've made over the past year. Last year, we saw the single highest drop in homicides in modern history. This year, we are continuing to downward trends in both homicides and shootings. Another note of progress has been our clearance rates. Those stats are as of last week, and we have a number of cases that are in the pipeline to be closed. It represents a large increase from the closures over last year. We are also seeing decreases in property crime. This is being driven largely by decreases in larcenies, and we are now showing decreases in auto thefts. And a lot of that goes to the credit of distributing over 3,600 wheel locks. The Mayor's Office has given over 50 air tags out, and we have more talks with the Able Foundation to provide more. We have a long way to go, we're not even halfway through the year, but I'm still cautiously optimistic. As far as compliance, on the compliance side, we're making a lot of progress in the consent decree. Thirty percent of the paragraphs are in initial or full and effective compliance. Fifty-six percent of the paragraphs are on track for compliance, and we have more paragraphs that are currently being assessed that will add to this total. As far as the Public Integrity Bureau goes, and most recent monitoring teams report, 76% of our PIB cases were rated as great or very good. And we're trying to achieve more productivity in PIB as we are in other areas by civilianizing the investigators and lessening the personnel impact on operations. In my closing comments, we are making some really good progress, there's no doubt that we have come, have done some amazing things, and we have some amazing partners. Teamwork has been the key to success. However, there are two important contributors to the success that never seem to get enough credit by anyone who's trying to analyze why the city is having success. First is the community. They elected Mayor Scott to a second term, and we're gonna try to continue the progress that we've made over the first four years. They elected Governor Moore to lead the state, and has been a great partner for the city. They elected State's Attorney Bates, who has been a great partner and helped with our progress towards closing cases and putting criminals behind bars. And they are gaining the trust back in their police department and giving more tips and help with crime. And secondly, and most dear to my heart, and the men and women of BPD, before you, before your eyes, you're seeing a BPD becoming a model of both reform for a police department and being able to lower crime at the same time. We're winning back the trust of the citizens, not everyone, but one at a time. We are seizing more guns, making more arrests, and doing it constitutionally. They're solving more cases and making better quality arrests. Prosecutions can't happen, criminals can't be taken off the street unless BPD collects the evidence, makes the arrests, and presents a case for prosecutions. Crimes can't be prevented unless our members are responding, patrolling the area on foot, on bikes, and in patrol cars. I want to thank the men and women of the BPD who are doing these exceptional things while working with 600 less officers than we should have. I'm proud to lead the department and be the Commissioner. Thank you again for your time, and I'll now turn it over to Chief Graham.
Well, good evening. Thank you tonight, I'm just going to give you a very quick overview of the 10 services that we have in the BPD budget. So the first service is the Administrative Bureau. This service is a $75 million budget with 188 positions. Some of the activities that are in here are our asset management, which pays for the buildings, the fleet, at $35.7 million. We have our Administrative Duties Division in this service, and that is where our injured officers for non-occupational injuries and occupational injuries are, $8.4 million. We have our grants unit at $7.9 million, and this includes some larger costs such as nearly $4 million for the pensions that aren't covered by the grants and things like that. Other areas, we have HR, Finance, Public Affairs, Executive Protection, and then the PC's office. In regards to some major highlights, we have $9 million from the SAT funding that's going towards this service, is going to, this is state funding, is going towards overtime, vehicles, renovation projects at the districts. We're going to be doing some beautification there, new paint, power washing, new breakrooms, new carpet tiles, things that are gonna help with the morale and hopefully the retention of the employees. In addition, within this funding, there's also the First Daycare Program Initiative, which is also, we hope, going to help with recruitment and retention within the department. You will see throughout our budget tonight that a big focus is professionalization. As we know, it's a national problem right now with recruiting sworn police officers across the country. So one of the things we've done in this year is Phase 3 of professionalization. We've looked at the budget, we went through a planned process of really going through each position and saying, can this be done by a professional person, or does it have to be done by a police officer? And the goal in this project is so that we can get police officers back to patrol. So in this service, we have nine positions being professionalized, seven of them are in the Administrative Duties Division, and two of them are in Quartermaster. Overall, in regards to the professionalization project in the budget, you'll see there's actually $5.8 million, which will give us 58 positions, and that is offset with a partial reduction in 32 police officers. Our next service is our largest service, our Police Patrol Service. This funds our nine police districts, and this year, one of the big changes is we have centralized community policing, so that we can have a focused approach on community policing. We've also moved out the district detectives, they've moved over to CIB. The service budget is $227 million, it funds 1,446 positions. In regards to some of the performance measures, percentage of time patrol officers spent on proactive policing, our target was 33%, we exceeded our target with 47%. Number of minutes on average from dispatch to arrival on scene for Priority One calls, our target was 10 minutes, and our actual was 7.6 minutes, and we managed to maintain this metric despite being short-staffed. In regards to the next service, sorry, I've got the clicker too at the same time, is Criminal Investigation Division. As we talked about, we've moved the district detectives in here, that activity is $29 million, and it has 190 positions. Our next largest activity will be our homicide, at $13.8 million and 84 positions. Some major highlights in here, you'll see we've added new activities, we've added seven new activities, so that we can have greater transparency into some of those areas under SIS. And we have added 14 new professional positions, sorry, that was 14, 1-4. Twelve of those are going to homicide as investigative specialists, and two are going elsewhere within the service. In regards to performance measures, percentage of homicide cases cleared, our target was 47%, our actual was 41%. Percentage of homicide warrants served, our target was 90%, we were nearly at our target with 88%. Next service, we have data-driven strategies, at $13 million and 55 positions. The Watch Center is our largest activity in there, $7.4 million. In regards to professionalization, we're looking, within this budget, at professionalizing the Watch Center. We recognize that this is not a quick thing. Right now, that activity is done by sworn personnel, so this will be a slow transition. We want to make sure that it's successful and sustainable, and there's a lot of knowledge transfer that needs to happen in that process. In regards to performance measures, number of open-source tips proactively found and sent to districts, our target was 2,300, we exceeded our target with 2,468, and we expect to do the same this year, too. The Public Integrity Bureau. At $18 million, we have 97 positions in this bureau. Our largest activity is Internal Investigations, at $11 million with 67 positions. Some highlights in this service this year is we have continued professionalizing, we've added five investigative specialists, of which two are supervisory, to oversee the other investigative specialists. This will allow for a career path for these positions, so that we can hopefully retain them and give them opportunities within the police department. We've also added a professional position to EODS and to OAH. In regards to performance measures, the percentage of investigations completed within six months, our target was 60%, our actual is 44%, and really, the constraint there is our staffing. Our staffing continues to be an issue completing these cases in time, so as I just mentioned, we've added additional investigative specialists to the service. Next, we have our recruitment section. There's only two activities within this section, there's new recruits at $20 million, and that is 168 positions. These are the new police officers in training at the academy. And then we also have a sworn recruitment at $10 million with 34 positions. You will see, we plan on having five academy classes in fiscal year 2025, and we do have state funding that helps fund some of the creative incentives that we have. We have a housing allowance, we have a referral incentive, we have a student loan assistance, and we have a signing bonus. As we discussed earlier, number of recruits hired, our target was 240, our actual was 112. As we mentioned, this is a national challenge that we're trying to deal with, we're trying to be creative and find ways that we can attract people and continue other efforts such as professionalization. Percentage of female sworn hires, our target was 30%, we're actually at 21%, but this has actually increased substantially from prior years. There's a lot of efforts that we have put towards attracting females, we mentioned the daycare earlier, we've also got some other programs. Crime Lab and Evidence Control, there is three activities in there, the Crime Lab itself at $14 million, Crime Scene at $6 million, and Evidence Control at $5 million. In regards to performance measures, percentage of requests completed, our target was 80%. We exceeded our target at 89%. And the main reason for this is the lab was able to hire analysts to increase production, and they also implemented a new software that streamlined the lab analysis process. Our next service, the Compliance Bureau, at $75 million and 366 positions, and this is, Bureau essentially focuses on the implementation and compliance of the consent decree. Our largest service in here is Information Technology, at $13.4 million and 27 positions, and then followed by Education and Training at $11.3 million and 59 positions. We are professionalizing eight positions within this service, six of them will go to Education and Training to be civilian trainers, and two will go to audits. We also have a state grant that provides 25 positions to this service, 15 of those are in Central Records. Special Operations Section, at $25 million and 116 positions. The largest activity is Aviation at $7.9 million, followed by SWAT at $6.4 million. In regards to performance measures, the percentage of high-risk warrants served were resolved without injury to officer, victims as suspects, our target was 100%, and our actuals were 100%. We also exceeded our target of patrol hours by mobile metro unit, target was 18,000, and we were over 20,000. And our last service is Patrol Support Service. The two areas in here are Buckings at $3 million with 16 positions, and Secondary and Special Events at $2.3 million. And Performance Measures, the number of hours spent staffing juvenile bucking, our actuals were 37,000, which exceeds our fiscal year 24 target, and the number of events staffed is 171. So, thank you.
That's it?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, colleagues, for tonight, do one question. If you have a follow-up, which is germane to your question, you ask the follow-up. We're gonna give colleagues one minute to ask your question, one minute. That buzzer's gonna go off. I'm gonna extend and ask the rest of our colleagues if we're comfortable giving that person an extension. After an additional 30 seconds, I'm gonna cut the council member off. Is everyone clear on the format that I'd like to use this evening? This is very similar to what we used for Baltimore City Public Schools last night, and it seemed to work very effective. Any questions or concerns with the format? Seeing as there are none, we will start with committee members. Council Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and again, thank you all and your leadership, and for helping Baltimore to become an improved, safe city to work and play in. Get right to my question. You know, we continue to have questions really every year about the police department or a car sitting in an area and not getting out of the car. Can you update us on, should they still be sitting in the cars, or is there a plan to really start working them in to the community and pairs, or, you know, whatever your strategy is, and has it started?
Yes, when I took over, we wanted to improve Foot Patrol. And so far, we did it, we just recently altered it, and we've got about 15% of our officers' time is spent on Foot Patrol, which is roughly about an hour. But sometimes, they are gonna still have to sit in the car, because what, things that I used to be able to do, have to go back to headquarters or the station to do, like write reports, or do a traffic citation, or basically do anything that I would need a phone, they can do right from where they're at. Now, there are, I would be, I'm not naive enough to think some aren't just sitting there doing nothing, but we've cut down a great deal on that. We don't have very many permanent posts, which means the car is sitting there for a certain period of time or for a certain reason. We want them mobile, because that really doesn't help, because if they're sitting in one location, it's happened multiple times, there'll be, there'll be an act of violence a block away. So we want them moving, and I'm really confident that the men and women are actually doing what we're asking them to do with the car stops and the Foot Patrol. I was actually pleasantly surprised with the amount of Foot Patrol that we found out that we were doing, and we continually get compliments about they're starting to see the officers out of the car. But it's still a long process, we still have a way to go, but I think we're doing, we're headed in the right direction.
Thank you for that update. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Schleifer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I'm gonna try to follow all of your roles. Commissioner, I just wanna thank you and your team for everything you guys are doing. This is the best that I've seen BPD in my lifetime operate, and so just a high level of professionalism from you and your team. Erin's been great communicating everything from the department, and so I just wanted to thank you and everybody under you, with one exception, but we'll leave that off for tonight, you know, for just the level of professionalism and just for everything you guys are doing, and it's really having an impact in the community, especially when we know we're short-staffed on the street, but the fact that you guys are doing what you're doing is having an impact. My question, my first question is regarding the Marine Unit. We saw, obviously, with what just occurred with the bridge, the need to have a quick response for the Marine Unit. And so what is the status currently of the Marine Unit, and how do we get that back to the way it used to be, where they can respond more rapidly?
The Marine Unit, we basically, we have a Marine Unit, but it's not confined to a unit or certain hours where they all work together. It's sort of like with our CIT officers, they're all spread out, and when we have an incident, they come together and perform their functions. But as far as a unit itself that's 100% confined, that we don't have it, if we were to start that again, it would require manpower that would come from somewhere, which is usually Patrol. So we can explore that, but at this time, I think we're probably gonna continue to work for now with the way it is where they're spread out throughout the districts and different units.
Okay, I mean, I think that is definitely worthwhile to explore, and if it's gotta come from Patrol, just to take it from downtown where they're gonna be mainly stationed anyways, would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, Mr. Commissioner, to you and your team for joining us this evening. I wanna, can you provide us an update on the arson registry or the establishment of the arson registry? I'm concerned that the number of cases has increased over the last three years, and that, you know, we, obviously, have seen the spike, we've seen some very high-profile instances. Two years ago, we passed legislation to establish that, and it is my understanding that you're working with the Fire Department on a regular basis to address these cases. Where are we with the registry, and when can we expect that to go live?
Quite honestly, we haven't done what we should've done so far with the registry, so we have to get that moving. We did have a couple changes in personnel, so that is something that Major, I'm sorry, Lieutenant Colonel Holman has on his radar to push forward. Some of the changes that we did make with the Fire Department is the Fire Department is now, we cohabitate with the Police Department in Headquarters, BPD Headquarters. So Fire and Police are working together every single day to discuss cases, and so far, it's working. Our arsons are down about 27% so far this year, and they're doing a great job. And we're also, Chief Wallace and I have also discussed possibly cross-referencing or cross-training our people, where we'll send an officer or two to the Fire Academy, the Fire Department will send a couple to the Police Department, and then that can cut down the amount of people that we even need in the unit, because you can do both. A lot of agencies have used that, and it's something we're looking at, but as far as the arson registry, we will get that going. We haven't done what we were supposed to do so far.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman, did you have a specific documentation request on that?
Yeah, we were asking when we could expect it to go live.
Okay, but not necessarily a documentation request, you're...
Yeah, I mean, they can report back to the committee, it'd be easier if it was just all in...
Yeah, we'll report back, Lieutenant Colonel Holman's writing it down as we speak. He oversees the arson unit.
Okay, and how much time, I guess, would you, because we've been basically figuring out how much time you would need to follow up with the committee?
In the follow-up, I can provide a timeline. I wouldn't wanna say right now, as the Commissioner alluded to, the staffing and the manpower that it would take to do that would have to be considered. Currently, the arson unit has three detectives. I would just like to also add, just in terms of the work that the arson unit is doing, currently, the clearance rate is 26%, the national average is 23%. For similar-sized cities, the clearance rate is 19%, that's the average, so they're working well above the national average of what we have. And as the Commissioner stated, I really, really think that that co-location of FIB and arson together is paying dividends, but specifically to the registry, we'll certainly have an answer and a timeline for you in the follow-up.
So could we get that by Friday?
Yes.
Like a time, okay, Friday?
Councilman, I think it will be difficult for us to turn that around in the review, considering the review process that it takes to get the submissions to the council by this Friday.
Yeah, I wasn't saying that the registry needs to be up by Friday, I was saying a expected timeline. The bill was passed in 2022, so the agency is currently out of compliance with the law.
Certainly, I'm just reminding the council members that when agencies receive the formal requests, with the hearing being tonight, they'll likely get their requests at some point tomorrow, and I'm just saying, it may be unrealistic to draft the responses, get them through BPD review and internal review and to the council by Friday. So perhaps with the BPD requests, I may recommend that we set sort of a baseline expectation of receiving responses perhaps by next Wednesday seems realistic, given that level of review, is what I would recommend.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you. Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's great to see so many people in leadership now that first went through being a major in my district. So, we trained you well in the 14th District, is all I have to say to that, okay? Thank you all, it's great, I'm very proud of all of you. I wanna go- I want to go back to something that came up and that I asked profusely during the Brooklyn hearings, and that is the use of the word indifference as what had been partially occurring with the NCOs and the community response, not response, but, you know, leading up to the, to the tragedy. And I want to know, I want to know what is being done now that we've been a few months out of that, and there's a lot of lessons learned. I would imagine that part of your, your community policing strategy is coming out of that...
Colleagues, do we have any concerns?
No, that's fine, he knows my question, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll turn it over to Deputy Chief Ritter, if she's here, she can talk to you about it. When I, when I took office, one of the first things I knew we had to do was come in compliance with our community policing plan because that was the one part of the consent decree we were lacking. And Sarah and I have known each other, Deputy Chief Ritter and I have known each other for several years. When she came here, she came here under the consent decree with community policing. So basically, we put her back in her home and let her do her thing, and she can tell you everything that she's doing because I would, I would miss several things that she's already on top of.
There we go. Good evening, everyone. Sarah Ritter, Deputy Chief of Community Policing. So as the Commissioner mentioned, my first job at BPD was reviving the NCO program when it was first called Neighborhood Coordination Officers. And so in coming back into this role, looking at sort of how that program has evolved, how we kind of want to bring back some of the original principles of community policing, problem-oriented policing that the NCOs are intended to do in the districts. So in April, we released a memo around community policing from the Commissioner's office. It is a precursor to a full community policing policy for the department. We put a community policing plan out in 2020. You should all have that. It sets sort of the broad objectives around community policing and the broad objectives around neighborhood coordination officers. The reality is we need more detail, as we see in some of the incidents, as you mentioned, of how we actually, day-to-day, have interactions with community that are problem-oriented and intended to build relationship. So a few concrete things that that Police Commissioner memo sets out is, first, the responsibility for attending community meetings is not just on the neighborhood coordination officers. We should be bringing sector patrol officers, supervisors, detectives, commanders. We should have a rotating responsibility for who's going to community meetings so that everyone in the district, everyone in the department knows their community, is, is used to interacting with their community. The second is around 3-1-1s. That's been a tool we've been using for problem-oriented policing, but gives more guidance around quality, and instead of every single issue submitting to 3-1-1, let's really focus from the BPD perspective on the ones that are really tied to public safety so that community has room to elevate their concerns as well in that system. Those first two are really intended. It's my long way of getting to, how do we clear up time in the NCO daily scope to build more relationship one-on-one, have those deeper conversations with community, so they're not running around to every single community meeting, running around to every single 3-1-1 issue, so that they can really delve into the deeper relationships? So that's, we've, we've tied that Police Commissioner memo with a set of weekly reporting that the NCOs do now, so they're tracking the problems that they're focused on. You know, so Councilwoman Ramos, as an example, if there's a set of vacant buildings that are deeply tied to drug activity, violence, can those NCOs work with the community to really problem-solve, bring in the right resources to those set of buildings? Because that takes time. And then the team that I oversee is professional staff who pair with those NCOs to do the follow-up with housing. So the neighborhood coordination officers in the districts pair with the neighborhood coordinators on my team, who are typically people who have background in public administration, criminal justice, whatnot. All that to say, we're really looking at setting a foundation that, one, all officers are, officers are community policing officers, but then also, NCOs really have that guidance and time to go deeper with community.
I appreciate that. May I do a follow-up?
If it is germane to your original question, you certainly may.
Absolutely, thank you. With all of this activity, which I think I want to go a little deeper in some of my other questions on community policing in general and working with community, but this question of what the Brooklyn report stated, which was, one of the big issues was officer indifference, right? And so if we're having the officers connect with community better, as you're saying, is that your theory, that then there would be less of that? I mean, I think in this particular case with Brooklyn, there was just a blatant disregard, frankly, for the community, and didn't know what was happening in Brooklyn homes because they had no relationship with them.
And I'll also, so in terms of the Brooklyn Homes report, I'll let those who wrote that answer for that. I will say, yes, that is the intention of making sure that it's not just three people in the district that are interacting with community, three people being the NCOs, right? You have to begin to change that muscle, you know, that, that muscle memory of like, you know, how to interact with community on a regular basis, right? How to have conversations and sort of break down that wall of indifference. In terms of Brooklyn, we are working right now with the Southern District on a plan specifically around some very deeper engagement in that area.
Thank you. Councilman Conway.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good to see you, Commissioner, good to see your team. But my question is pretty direct. It looks like we're making some pretty significant progress on the consent decree. We've definitely been working really hard on it. Do we have a timeline of when we might expect to satisfy the requirements and exit the consent decree?
My goal, when I, I have a three-year contract, and my goal was to be done by my third year. What's the date, the third, fourth? June 8th would be one year, so I'm hoping to be done within two years. I know Judge Bradar has stayed on just so he can finish out the consent decree. One of the things that he wants to do is turn the department back over to the city as a reformed, better police department, and he, along with the Department of Justice and the consent decree monitors are all working together because they know we're trying. It's the biggest holdup is going to be our staffing. Our staffing numbers are just low, and we may not be able to accomplish some of the things we have to accomplish, but we're going to do our best, but I think we can be out of it in two years.
As a follow-up, Mr. Chair, I know we pulled together a chart that explained a sort of breakdown between the various levels for each paragraph implementation, and then finally satisfying and having an agreement between the monitor. Can, can, do you guys have that chart or that ability to provide that chart? It's really helpful for me to visualize, understand our progress to date.
Yeah, we can send, we don't have it with this, we can send it to you, yes.
That would be great, we'll make that an official follow-up. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Commissioner. In May, we saw the lowest amount of homicides in May since 1970. That is an enormous accomplishment for our city, and I credit our state's attorney, I credit BPD, I credit Montsy, the mayor, and our communities for all being part of that very, very proud reduction in violence. And I want to say that I am really proud of the way this department is operating as it relates to violent crime. I'm not satisfied on where we are with quality of life crime. This next council will have full local control, and I am very interested in making sure it is safe for everyone across the city of Baltimore. So I'm specifically interested in how many citations have been issued in the last 30 days in Fell's Point and Graceland Park?
Unless someone else has that number, I don't have it, but I can tell you it's very few. I'm not going to sugarcoat where we are with citations. We've only issued 81 written, 58 of those were rejected, but there's some reasons for that. The main reason is that we can't go right to a citation, we have to give a warning. It's mandated by the consent decree that we have to give a warning, and unfortunately, a lot of the problems that we run into in Fell's Point are not citation-eligible because they're, they're under the age of 18. So then, what the officers have to do with these large crowds is to decide whether taking the young person out of the crowd is worth having that officer leave with the manpower because every time we move, remove a juvenile, obviously, if they're fighting or something, we, it's going to be an arrest. But we have to be able to control the large crowds, and we have a plan with Montsy and all of our partners. I think it's worked the last weekend. We got to keep building on that because the deterrent is to not make them want to come down and create havoc like they've been doing over the, over the last few months. But one thing that I look at with citations, and I know State's Attorney Bates said it as well, that this is a more difficult and more complicated process than either he nor I thought it was going to be. I thought it would be a little easier to do. I didn't realize that, that going back to paper would have such an effect on something because we have highly switched our officers to, to electronics, but we made apps, the state's attorney is doing training, so we're pushing our men and women to do the citations, but their, their pushback is that once they give a warning, the people, this behavior is ceasing, which means they won't issue the citation. Now, one thing I do look at to see if the warnings are working is our calls for service for quality of life issues are down 15%. So that's an indicator that what we are doing is helping. Some areas, it's just going to be very tough. Fell's Point, I'm not going to lie, it's going to be tough because over, during the pandemic, and up until Mr. Bates took office, there wasn't a whole lot we could do there. And now that he's in office, we have to win those, get those areas back.
Yeah, no, and I ask about Graceland Park and Fell's Point because they are both neighborhoods in my district where one is heavily invested, the other is pretty disinvested, and we see in both cases significant quality of life issues around underage drinking, the street parties, in the case of Graceland Park, a lot of drug dealing, and it does not seem like the approach is working, and that's why I ask about the citation piece and how few have been written, because I do think in both cases, there needs to be a clear consequence for repeated flaunting of the law, and I'm frustrated by what I sometimes hear officers say, which is, "The consent decree says we can't," or, "There's nothing in the consent decree that says you can't enforce the law." And that remains a frustration of mine, and I do want to specifically shout out the city administrator for being down in Fell's and the work that the major...
Colleagues, colleagues, do we have any concerns, given Councilman Cohen 30 more seconds to finish? Please continue.
That the major is doing down there, but it, it remains an enormous concern for me and for my community, and again, I know it is not isolated to those two areas, but I think we need to be more strategic in how we are dissuading folks and, and just engaging with folks as well where we're seeing this consistently pop up.
Yes, sir, and we will be. We, with the training, with the state's attorney's office and the training that we're giving our officers, if the warning doesn't work, they go to a citation, and the warning doesn't have to be that particular night. So we're working on getting wording and a document out to them to give them more guidance because the, the consent decree does say a warning first, but it doesn't specify it has to be that particular night. So we're getting clarification from the DOJ and the consent decree monitors as to what exactly to clear up the wording. So maybe on some instances where there's a, a history of aggressive behavior towards the underage drinking and drinking in public, we may be able to go to a citation right away, but until that's changed, we still have to do the warning.
Appreciate that. I hope to see a stronger sense of urgency around those issues, and again, I want to sincerely thank the women and men of the police department for the extraordinary work on violence reduction that we're seeing across the city of Baltimore. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Council Vice President Middleton.
So my next question, areas that have the late-night openings. There seems to be an up, this must be the time of year where I guess the expiration for late-night openings and people reapply, and then new people try again, and I guess that's where my longevity comes into play, where there's, it's interesting how areas that have tried and never make it, and it's usually the areas that never need late-night openings and just, you know, I know that the BMZA sends you, you know, sends the department ones that come up and it's their time, and just hoping that you have the, because they seem to rely on that data of whether they're going to approve, and, you know, there's areas that I think should never have late-night openings, and I just hope that, that the records are kept strong for that because I think with your...
Madam Vice President, everyone good with giving the Vice President another 30 seconds to wrap up her question?
Thank you.
Please continue.
I, I think with your, I just lost my train of thought, but that's okay. But, so I'll just move on. Is there, you know, you're aware of that, is there a plan? Are, you know, I know areas that, like I said, never need late openings, and like Doe Field and, what is that, Cross Street, Coal Spring, certain areas in the 5100 block of Park Heights, and so on. I just want to know, are you up to date and keen with that and keeping that moving?
Yes, our, our district commanders all have an analyst, and they can also use our data-driven strategies to get the statistics and to present the case for not allowing the late-night license, and it's incumbent upon them because that's the person that's going to have to answer for it is the district commander. So they've done a really good job. Some of them, they just can't, I think because of zoning, some of them don't fall into that category, but the ones that do, they, they've done a really good job. And I see the, I still see the requests come in when we get a late-night request, and it goes to all of our colonels and lieutenant colonels as well, so they can look at it and see, to make sure the district commander is doing what they're supposed to be doing if they think this place should not be allowed to stay open.
Okay. I just see that in a lot of areas like Northwest, Baltimore, these are the areas where all the problems are, and it's like, you know, what do we do to really stop and change that? Just a, just a thought.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Schleifer.
Thank you. Commissioner, what is the amount of cases per homicide detective currently?
Good evening, again. Currently, the caseload essentially, over the last three years, has hovered around 6.3 homicide cases per detective. The staffing in the homicide unit has averaged about 48 detectives catching cases. That is down slightly this year at 39. And again, you know, obviously, we're not through the year yet, but we're projected to really be down for the first time in a while. Looking, again, with projected numbers, with, you know, the, the way the rate is going now, it'll be about a 14% reduction in the caseload, you know, for, for the homicide detectives.
So, I mean, obviously, that's one of the most important functions in BPD is bringing some closure to the families and communities that are suffering these losses, and so what are we doing to, to get that average caseload down so that we can get the clearance rate up?
I think you hit the nail on the head, Councilman. The lower the caseload, the higher the clearance rates. So as we've seen trending from last year to this year, you know, currently, as of Monday, the homicide clearance rate is 72... you know, currently, as of Monday, the homicide clearance rate is seventy-two point two percent, which is the highest it's been really in, in a decade. We did an analysis in April, and we were about eighteen points higher than what the average clearance rate was over those ten years.
Say that again? You said the homicide clearance rate is seventy-two percent?
Currently, right now, as of Monday, the clearance rate is seventy-two point two percent.
Over, for year-to-date?
For this year, yes. The, the Uniform Crime Report clearance rate is seventy-two point two percent.
Uh, that doesn't seem right. Are you sure, you sure that's right? For homicide clearance rate, year-to-date is seventy-two percent?
Yes. Compared, so compared to last year, at this time, it was thirty-nine point seven percent, or I'm sorry, twenty-three point three percent.
So when we talk clearance rates-
Sir, I think that-
I think, I think what you're thinking is that, are, are you asking for the cases that have occurred this year? How many of them are cleared? Or you just the clearance rate? Because what happens with the homicide clearance rate, if the, if the detective clears a case from twenty-twenty-three and twenty-twenty-four, it counts as a twenty-twenty-four clearance rate because it takes multiple months to close cases. So it, it, that, that's why it is part of the reason that it's a little high, but part of the reason is just really good detective work. And again, we can't emphasize enough the cooperation of the community and the State's Attorney in helping us close these cases. I've never seen cases closed so quickly.
Yeah, I mean, I, I understand how the clearance, how the clearance are a piece and, you know, thankfully homicides are down, so therefore, the percentage obviously comes out significantly higher when you're closing a case from previous years. But that sounds like a very high number. So, I mean, well received, and I appreciate that. But, you know, I just wanna see like what, what plans there are to get the staffing levels back up in homicide specifically so that the clearance rate can continue to rise.
The problem with, with doing that is the fact that I look at their clear, I look at the caseload every, every week that it comes out to see where it's getting. The problem that we deal with, and this is throughout the department, is anytime you put someone in a specialized unit, that's one less person in patrol because even if I take them, let's say a homicide detective usually comes from a detective unit. Well, the detective unit then takes usually from a DAT team, and then the DAT team takes from patrol. So ultimately, that person is gonna be one less person that we have to handle calls. And we're trying to hold the line with that because they're so short with staffing, that, that we're trying to do more with less. And they've done a phenomenal job with the amount of people that they have there. So I keep an eye on it, and Colonel Holman also tells me. We did add a few people. The problem, even with adding a few people, when we do add a detective, it takes six months to eight months, six to nine months for them to be able to investigate a homicide because they have to learn by handling the suspicious deaths or hospital deaths or something like that. All the other cases that they investigate before they start actually investigating the homicide. I'll let Steve jump in if he's got more.
No, and Chief Graham mentioned it earlier in her presentation, that we are, you know, funded for additional civilian investigators. So currently, we have four civilian investigators with plans to hire fourteen additional civilian investigators. And those individuals help take those other investigation caseloads off of the detectives that handle homicides. So for example, the unattended deaths, the hospital deaths, the other investigations, in addition to some of the administrative tasks that detectives would normally have to complete during the course of their investigation, those civilian investigators will be able to help out. So I think, and we've already seen, you know, some really good results. Off the top of my head, I think our civilian investigators have, have handled more than sixty death investigations that aren't homicide. So, you know, DOAs, unattended deaths, so far this year alone. So those are sixty cases that last year would be in the, you know, the mix for the homicide detective. So I really, really think, you know, as we onboard these investigators, that's gonna help tremendously.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to go back to the citation docket. Commissioner, you mentioned a topic that spent a lot of time on the State's Attorney the other day, this issue of warnings, the tracking of warnings. There was a hearing earlier this year where it was reported a number of seven hundred and fifty-seven in the Central District. Can you speak to, does the agency track warnings? If you don't, why do you not track where the warnings are versus where citations are? And sort of, I'm happy to add context if that's helpful, but wanna keep the, the question concise.
Yeah, the, the warnings in the, in the Central were actually tracked by the, the major at that, at that time. He wanted to see how many warnings his people were giving. We don't track it citywide because in order to track it, and his tracking mechanism was by, I believe, by asking the officers or having them submit a report. And we really don't track like that anymore. We track according to our data. It's all data-driven. So what we would have to put in place is we'd have to have officers call out a warning. And then if they do that, they're gonna have to start, it's gonna have to spend more and more time dealing with the warning where sometimes they, they may not even just walk by and say, "Hey, you can't do that." And that's, that's classified as a warning. But it would be very, very difficult to try to track every single warning that our officers give throughout the city. It, it's just, it's something that would be really time-consuming, and we'd have to come up with a way to do it electronically to be a, make it.
Kind of a quick follow-up, Mr. Chair. Do you remain to that? So my, my concern is, without tracking them, there's, I have raised concerns with the State's Attorney about equity and where certain issues are being enforced and where they're not. I mean, you mentioned Fell's Point. I would say Federal Hill and the Ravens game is, is, is as chaotic as many other events. But more importantly, you know, if we know in one particular area, there may be a lot of warnings, other areas are getting, going straight to citations, that's a, that's a concern. And so I think, and just the latter part of needing to track police interactions generally. If you're saying that the warnings are effective, it'd be nice to know that we gave out fifteen warnings and they were effective. If they weren't, then I think that should inform the work. And so I would say if, would there be consideration on trying to figure out how to do that? You, you mentioned an electronic mechanism. Can, can we go deeper into that?
We, we can look at it, but no one can go right to, from a warning. They have to give a warning. Consent decree says we can't go right to writing a citation. There has to be a warning in there, and then they have to articulate that the warning was given before the citation was, was issued. So there, there's no way of going right to a, to a citation. And since we've been doing it, we've only submitted, we've only written eighty-one, and unfortunately, fifty-eight of those were rejected. So since we've been doing them, we've only got thirty, was it thirty-three citations that have actually gone through to the citation docket. I see some. I have them now submit a report to me every district and every unit as to what citations they wrote the previous day. And they still say that warnings, but we can, we can try to explore some way to, to track those. I just don't know how we, how we do it. We'd have to come up with an innovative way to have the officers track them.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll reserve my questions for the next round.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Following up on my previous line of questioning on the community policing work, I appreciated the outline that you mentioned earlier about doing strategic three-one, I'll just say strategic three-one-ones. And certainly, you were prepared in creating an example on vacant properties. Very good. I just wanted to ask about training. So the, are the NCOs, one of the things that I'm worried about is we're putting, it's a special kind of person that can work directly with communities, and that's kind of where the whole NCO idea came from. And I like the idea of having, you know, the officers, you know, going to community meetings, et cetera. But it, it still feels to me like we need additional training with the officers, with the NCOs, and in, in terms of communications, in terms of how to do, do some of this so that we can, I'm finishing up, so that we can, this doesn't happen, this type of thing that happened in Brooklyn doesn't happen again elsewhere because somebody doesn't have a good relationship with somebody in the, in the community.
Really quick, back to Councilman Burnett. We can track those, we can try to track them through E-Tix. That's what we're exploring for the warnings. E-Tix, it's the E-tickets thing?
Yes, so training. I mean, DC NATO can talk to, we, we have eight hours every year of community policing training that we have to do across the department. So that is something that we think very strategically about in terms of everyone getting some training on community policing and interacting with community. In that, this year will be some information on the three-on-one quality conversation. Another place where I think, I, I think you're talking about more sort of the communication skills, like how to build, how to build connection. One of the places that we have been focusing that is less talked about in the, in the realm of community policing, but I think is, is equally as important, is the conversations that detectives have with community, that detectives have with victims. The other unit that falls under me is victim services. And so part of the memo I mentioned earlier also includes trauma-informed death notification training for all homicide detectives. They're actually going through a round of that this week. And so I think that's another place where I would like to see that sort of trauma-informed approach to communication being brought in elsewhere across the department as well. But we're starting with detectives in that realm.
I'm sure my colleague will talk about the trauma-informed piece since he passed that bill. So I'll let him do that. My, I, I, I guess I'm not understanding, and maybe I just need a conversation afterwards offline. We cannot have officer indifference, period, end of story, right? So how do we get there? And I understand the work around community policing because that's really important. But if not, all the officers are going through the same thing, we are going to have indifference. How do we get there? What is the plan?
And I, I think part of the cure to indifference is connection, right? And so how do you create that opportunity for connection and understanding? And I think part of that comes through training, and I think part of that comes through your, your daily activities. And so I think it's a combination of training and daily-
So who's in charge? Who's in charge? Who's doing it? Who's making sure that it's happening? Who's in charge?
The district commanders and education and training gives them the training. When an NCO is selected, they have to go through a vetting process. They're interviewed before they're, they're taken into the unit. But they aren't the only ones that we want to use. But I don't know that we will ever get rid of indifference in some people. That's just-
Then they shouldn't be police officers.
Well, I understand that, but there's, you can go through all kind of processes that you want. There's still some people to get through in every profession that probably shouldn't be doing the profession they're doing. So we do the best we can. We train, we become more and better trained every single year. They go through tons of training. They have body-worn cameras, so when we get a complaint to someone is not being respectful, we can look at it and it goes to DC NATO shop. But I don't know that you can completely get rid of anything in any profession because some of those people are, it's just in their DNA. And I don't know that you can, we have the vetting process for everything, but there's also a need to have a PIB for when our officers don't do what they're supposed to do.
Right, I understand. But if we're gonna be characterizing what had occurred at Brooklyn as officer indifference, we have to eradicate it.
I agree, and we, we're doing everything we can to do it, but I don't know that you ever get a hundred percent get rid of-
I just wanna know who's in charge of making sure that all happens.
Me.
I mean, in terms of like, who can I go to to say, "Okay, what's the next step? How are we doing this? What are we doing? Is it community policing? What is it next? What are the outcomes?"
It is, it is community policing.
Hang on, hang on. He's in charge.
I understand.
And all these folks report to him, and he's saying you can either come to him or to this lady. I'm sorry, I didn't get your name, ma'am.
Sarah Ritter. Sarah Ritter, Deputy Chief of Community Policing.
Ritter, sorry, Ms. Ritter. You can either go to Commissioner Worley or Ms. Ritter. Ms. Ritter, can you follow up with the councilwoman after, offline, so that you can discuss her concerns related to the issue that she raised revolving around the indifference issue that was identified in the report?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Thank you so much. Councilman Conway.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner, you and I have had a number of conversations about issues around drug dealing, known drug corners, known, known locations where we know drug dealing is happening. One great example of this is at a substance abuse center on York Road in front of my district office, and also just a block down in front of a, a pizza shop. When an officer sees a group of folks dealing drugs and is aware that this is going on and people are routinely standing around, what, what should they do?
That, that becomes basically just standing around is really not a, that officer, the easiest thing for an officer to do is get out of the car and talk to people. Usually, if someone's doing something they shouldn't be, they're not gonna hang around to talk to the officer. But for the officer to, to assume that there's drug dealing happening would not be a, a good look for the officer. But he can get out and talk to them. He may know that that's happening. I equate it back to a story that my mom, before she passed away, used to tell me. She worked in a store on Austin Street, and she would tell me when I go to visit her, "They're over there dealing drugs. I don't know how the cop doesn't see it." I was like, "Mom, you're in the store for eight hours watching what these guys do." I was like, "If you're still gonna start to move, it's probably a cop coming in the area. They're not gonna do the same thing in front of you that they're doing in front of everyone else." So the officer has to be able to articulate what he's seeing. But the biggest thing is to get calls from the citizens and give a description of the person who possibly could be having the drugs, and then the officer can do the investigation. But the easiest way to obate the problem is get out and talk to them and just stand there because they don't wanna talk to you. The people that are doing bad acts, they're not gonna wanna talk to the cop. So getting them out of the car and walking foot is the, is a key.
I, I would agree a hundred percent. I think that's what we wanna see. We're, we're not consistently seeing that, unfortunately. And I would posit that everyone on this panel would agree. This is especially important, I would say, in part because of the most recent news coming out about opioids and the impact that it's having on the city. Certainly enforcement is an important role here. So I don't really have an additional question, but noting that this is really important, I'd love to see more out of the department, more engagement to address exactly this issue.
And, I mean, I'd be remiss if I didn't say, there's a lot of open-air drug markets in Baltimore. The, the, we weren't able to enforce a lot of the arrests that we were able to make in the past. We weren't able to do misdemeanor arrests for a long time. So the drug dealers got more brazen. Now there's so many of them, we don't have enough cops to probably address every single one. But we are taking them off one at a time our group violence reduction strategy along with Monsey. And it's not just about arrests and, and taking the drug dealers off the street. We wanna give them an alternative because we're not gonna arrest their way out of this drug epidemic. We have to give these drug users and drug dealers an alternative to using drugs and an alternative to that behavior. And that's what Monsey does with the wraparound services, and that's why group violence reduction strategy is working so well, is the fact that we have people that are saying, "I don't wanna do this anymore. I don't wanna go to jail. I don't wanna end up dead." And they're taking advantage of the services. Now, the ones that don't, you usually see the group violence uni, uh, unit investigating, and you'll see the take-down with the indictments and the guns off the streets. But we give them an option. And you don't have to take the services, but you have to stop the violence. You can elect to take them and move on, or you can just not take them and move on. Whatever we want you to do is put the guns down, but we want you to take a service and become a productive member of society. Get a job. We offer, they offer that. So that's the key to, to stopping it. Making arrests will help with some that don't wanna listen, but the majority of them wanna get out of it. They just need help getting out of it.
Yeah, I, I would love to see the insights learned from GVRS in some way incorporated or used in our efforts around drugs. So I, you know, we had a conversation, I know, Mr. Chair, I'll stop here. We had a conversation earlier with CAO and Monsey about this yesterday, but I know we're gonna be looking into that, and I look forward to anything that comes out of it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I mean, most of the, most of the violence are circled around drugs. So we're, we're tackling it. It's just they, they're, we have to tackle them one drug trafficking organization at a time, or we've got several investigations at a time.
Thank you. Thank you. We've also been joined by Councilman James Torrance, 7th District Councilman. I'm going to get to you after, Councilman Cohen. I have a quick question. Laura, can you kindly remind me, did I ask at some point earlier in budget hearings in the past week about a comparison of the benefits provided to entry-level police officers in BPD versus our surrounding jurisdictions? I can't remember. I think I did.
You did. That question came up in the Office of the Labor Commissioner hearing, and I, I dropped a, I dropped that benchmark data into our shared file, so I can, I'll send you the link.
Awesome. Thank you. And that compares an entry-level BPD officer with which jurisdictions?
With Baltimore County, Anne Arundel County, Howard County, and Prince George's County. And that, the benchmarking was completed last fall. So it was as of data last August.
In your experience, how often does? That's a stupid question. Never mind.
I think I know what you're gonna, what we see, and I'll defer to the Commissioner and his team to jump in here, but what I understand from our colleagues who are, who are on the front lines of negotiating the contract is that it's sort of a race to the top. So when we negotiated the last contract with the FOP, we were able to make a lot of progress in very targeted areas for compensation with our officers. And what we saw after we negotiated that contract is that some of our neighboring jurisdictions used us as the peer, and then they negotiated wages in those jurisdictions that, that were higher than what we had just negotiated. And so there just continues to be this race to the top as jurisdictions compete for talent.
My 11 nieces and nephews call that leapfrog. Thank you very much, Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner, I want to give a quick shout out to Aaron Murphy, who's been really great at communicating with our office and my colleague's office apparently as well, and just mediating any issues we've had. Also want to give a shout out to Deputy, former Deputy Commissioner Monique Brown, who I think did an outstanding amount of work to improve culture within the department. With her departure, I am curious, what are we doing to intentionally promote women within the department and particularly black women within the department?
Basically, well, with her departure, what's going to happen is when, when I put her in her position, I divided operations up into two different, two different areas, patrol and community, I mean Criminal Investigation Bureau. With her departure, I'm not going to replace her for a little bit of time. I'm going to have that all go back under Deputy Commissioner Jones. He had it previously. So he's going to continue, continue to oversee that. And DC NATO is, NATO is going to oversee PIB and compliance. And then with my Admin Bureau, I'm going to leave Deputy Chief Graham and Deputy Chief Delaraco are going to report directly to me. So right now, we have, we have several females that are, you have one sitting two seats over from me. That's a lieutenant colonel, just became a lieutenant colonel, I think, what, December? In December. We have a couple majors that are, that are in the pipeline, but we, we have to get everyone trained. It's not as easy to jump into these roles as, as you think, and I learned that myself when I became the Commissioner. It's, you can prepare for it all you want, but when you're the boss, it's a little different than, than being answering, having someone else answer. So we, we're doing the 30 by 30, and I'll let Director Blyther, if she's here, speak about that if you'd like, but we are a participant in that. I think she said our, we've been hovering around 16% with female officers, and that's been staying steady for the last couple years. And there's a huge push to hire females. We had a leadership program here that had 50, 50 females from around the country, 25 from here, 25 from, from other departments, and we're constantly mentoring. And DC Brown was one of the best mentors we have. Unfortunately, she's moved on and we'll, I go by the Ravens adage, just in this case, it would be the next woman up. So instead of the next man up. So we, we have to keep training. That's, that's a perfect example, segue into why DC Jones is at Senior Management Institute in Policing. We want to have our people trained so that when someone does leave, there's no loss. It's a loss to the person, but there's no loss in productivity because there's someone else ready to step up and take their role. So long story is, we're working on it with the 30 by 30 and pushing to get females hired and bring them in from anywhere. We'd love to have city residents, and we push that. And Major Johnson over there has done a phenomenal job with recruitment since she's taken over, and I'm really confident we're getting ready to start one of the biggest classes we've had in, I think, over two years. So things are moving in the right direction.
I appreciate that, and I'm gonna get to recruitment later, but I do think diversity within the top ranks of the department is extremely important, both for recruitment and for just the functioning of the department. And again, Deputy Commissioner Brown, those are very big shoes that we are losing in her. And I just hope that we are making real strides to promote within the leadership within those ranks. Thank you.
Yeah, we are. I haven't, I haven't, I don't think I've hired anybody from outside to come in as far as taking a deputy commissioner spot.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
He was just telling me five. I didn't realize that. I should have counted in my head. Five of the nine district commanders are female. And civilian leadership. So we, we are doing everything we can, and I'm, I'm confident that we'll keep moving on. I had 50% of my deputy commissioners were black females, and all of a sudden, within a month and a half, DC Briscoe decided to move on and retire after 30 years, and DC Brown moved on to another position somewhere that we haven't found out yet. So.
Yeah, and again, I just hope we are being extremely intentional in how we're filling the top ranks of the department because I think it matters in terms of the message that we're sending to the city. Thank you, Commissioner.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Councilman Torrance.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, Commissioner. My question's really simple. Since we're on the race to the top in terms of salaries, have we looked at undoing the staffing model that we had from the BATS administration? Have we looked at having officers do 12-hour shifts rather than having three shifts? We have two shifts so that we have the maximum manpower on the streets. Since we're 600 officers short, we have to think wisely about personnel. I say that because my commanders have shortfalls some nights. Sometimes there's literally just them, and there's a lieutenant and a sergeant out there filling in on a post because there's not enough officers. So I think as we're negotiating with the union, we have to think about how do we change the staffing model to meet the need that we currently have?
Yes, we, we're looking at every staffing model. My, now he's my assistant, one of my Assistant Chief of Staff is Derek Loeffler, is the guru with that. And probably a couple months ago, I told him to look at 12-hour shifts to see if that's beneficial. The problem you run into with 12-hour shifts, if you don't have enough people, when the next shift comes on, you can't, you can only keep them for four hours, and you're working really, really short. And then that would probably require us to put a numerous amount of officers back to patrol to be able to staff it because you wouldn't be able to do the drafting that we do now, which I absolutely hate. I hate forcing somebody to work when they don't want to work. And we're doing everything we can to fill the cars without drafting. Because what's going to happen, especially now as we're in the summer, we're going to wear our cops down. They've done a phenomenal job, but we've got to make sure that we try to staff as best we can so we're not wearing them out. And just keep pushing for it. But yeah, we're looking at every option. 10 hours, I know didn't work because I know what you need for that. You need 1,200 cops, and we don't even have anywhere near that many. When we did it in the past, we started 10-hour shifts and we tried to do it with 1,000. It was a disaster. So we can't go back to 10, so it's either the 12 or the eight and a half. And right now, the eight and a half is working pretty well. There's another schedule that we're looking at, and, but I think the civilianization that we're going through that Chief Graham brought up and was talking about is going to be the big key. It's helped us already in homicide with the civilian investigators. It's helped us in public integrity and hiring. By the end of the year, the administrative officers that are in the district will be back in patrol. There's a couple administrative positions in the districts that are going to be eliminated. So we're moving in the right direction.
And my next question is, have we bargained for, sorry, oh, sorry. Sorry, Chair.
Hang on. If you have a follow-up that's directly germane, and please keep it to under 30 seconds. Please continue.
Quick follow-up. Civilian positions. Have we looked at a model where there, and this is a complaint I've gotten from retired officers, if they want to come back for a civilian position, they have to take less pay? Have we looked at ways that we can keep officers, retire them from patrol, but allow them to stay in the same pension system and do this, do it on the civilian side of it? Just thinking through with our union partners because that is a big issue for a number of them taking reduced pay.
Good evening. Thank you for the question, Councilman. The answer is yes, we have contemplated that. We have a new, a few options that, you know, we've just sort of memorialized, and we're going to be talking to the administration. One of the issues that you have in retaining retirees is the prohibition on the pension side of, so that they can keep their pension and, you know, have a full-time status as a civilian. That would require a legislative change, an ordinance change to the, to the FNP retirement system in Article 22. But it's something, it's certainly something we'd like to discuss, to think about at least, but we also have other options. Right now, how we keep retirees is we put them on contract or contractual employees. And we think that if we want to grow that core, there's around, I'd say, what, 50 or so right now? Yeah. And I've, we've got some recommendations to, to grow that cohort of employee. I think it's going to take maybe some more pay, and I think there are some benefits that administratively by city policy they can't get because they're retired. And so I, those are things that we are actively looking at, as well as, we'd like to talk about some process changes so we can maybe get them onboard faster. There's a, there's a whole sort of process for approval, but we are actively thinking about that, and hopefully we'll, we'll have some success in this upcoming year making some of those changes.
Andy, you said Article 22. Is that state code or?
No, that's the city code, and I believe, I hope I haven't miscited it, but that's the Retirement Systems article.
Okay, if you did or didn't, I was just curious if it was state or city. It's city. Thank you very much. Thank you. Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess my question is about loading and unloading in delivery areas, daytime versus night. So it's my understanding DOT does a lot of the ticketing enforcement during the day around those business areas with parking, loading, and unloading. So when does the police department pick up for night deliveries and, and noise and those kind of things around businesses when delivery is happening? Are you responsible for that, your department?
Well, they're, the officers can write a citation anytime, just because the DOT does, is out during the day. But our officers are free to use their discretion to write a citation 24/7 if there's trucks parked illegally. I can tell you there's one place that drives me crazy. It's the 400 block of East Baltimore Street with the, just the, they just pull up and park and stop. And we've done a few things with Pratt Street in front of two businesses that the DoorDash or the delivery services just pull up and think they can stop and block traffic. Our officers have done a phenomenal job, but anytime someone has a complaint, send it, have them send it to the district commander because district commander can address it simply by sending the officers out. But they also can send their NCOs out to talk to the business first and say, hey, just tell your person they can't unload here. We always try to give them the, maybe they just don't know, but I'm sure there's a sign that tells you not to, and, but we'll give them the benefit of the doubt and give them a warning, say you can't do that. And then if they continue their behavior, a citation can be written.
Okay, because we seem to have that problem again around the Eddie's, where the school is, and then also the Royal Farm on, it's a night problem, the Royal Farm on, near Loyola on Cold Spring. It just seems to be problems again around that area.
Yeah, the Loyola-Cold Spring, I remember that. Part of that issue is where they're located. I don't know that they have enough room for those big trucks to get in there and without
Right.
changing something crazy. Because I know they, they used to park, hang out in the street partially, things like that.
Would you say the police will go in and talk to those owners?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yeah, because we want to, we want to try to abate the problem without giving a citation if we can. Most effective, least intrusive is what our officers are, are driven by. Just go in and tell them you can't do it. There's your warning. If you decide to do it again, then obviously you didn't listen to the warning, which means you have to get a citation.
And you, I'm sure they keep track of those visits and when they do that.
They should, yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Councilman Schleifer. Is there no more questions? Councilman Burnett?
We wore, we wore him out.
No, I appreciate the Councilman following the rules. Councilman Burnett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, sorry. One of the questions that, or issues that came up, Mr. Commissioner, in the meeting with the State's Attorney's Office, sorry, back on the citation docket here, was that when we were presented with data that was broken down by age, racial demographics, and the outcomes, there was no listing of Hispanic or Latino residents in Baltimore City. Can you speak on how that's possible, that none of the citations, this, like literally the third largest group of people in the city?
So Councilman, I watched that hearing, so I think that the confusion was that when we have our specific citations, no agency, I think it was the way that, quite frankly, was explained by Ms. DeRoz that was a little bit confusing. So no agency, from my understanding, fills out the box that is ethnicity. I understood what your point was in that chart. What the State's Attorney's Office, Ms. DeRoz did, I confirmed afterwards because I called, was she was backfilling that information from Maryland Judiciary Case Search, which was my understanding. The problem with Maryland Judiciary Case Search is you can put in the same individual, and we actually did this as, with a specific person that we knew was Hispanic. And in Key Search, in two different counties, the same individual came up as white and then other, there's like another category. So when Ms. DeRoz was talking about that specific ethnicity citation, that did not, that data did not come from BPD. Because I, I understood what you were trying to ask with the chart. So if that helps.
So just to clarify, the State's Attorney's Office is going back and essentially guessing who these people are and what their race is?
No, I believe what she was explaining, which again, you can clarify with the State's Attorney's Office, I believe when she was trying to, when they were trying to create that chart, it was taking the citations that she knew and taking that information from Key Search. That's my understanding. You can definitely follow up with them. What I can tell you is none of that information that was provided by BPD or officers issuing the citations because they also stated in the State's Attorney's Office, Ms. DeRoz trains all of them, and she says none of the agencies, that's the MTA, that is us, that is the, I believe she said, some of the campuses that are giving citations. No one actually checks that box on the citation. The citation itself was not created by our agency. The citation itself was created by the courts. That was my understanding from clarification because I understood your, the rules apply to me too, sir. The, that was my understanding for trying to clarify your questions.
So just to close it on, Mr. Chair, so we just have no idea of the racial demographics of who's getting citations in the city of Baltimore. Is that essentially what we can sort of take from this?
I'm only speaking to what came up in the State's Attorney's Office. When you were talking to the State's Attorneys, where Ms. DeRoz gave you that information. I'm not speaking to anything beyond that.
I didn't, I'm going to jump in. I didn't hear BPD say anything related to, they don't know the, the race of individuals who receive citations. Is that, can someone from BPD confirm? Commissioner, can someone address, the councilman made a statement that it sounds like BPD doesn't know the race of individuals receiving citations. Can someone please respond to that?
Well, we wouldn't presume to know that either, sir. So if we were, it's, you know, in terms of, you know, I think that's part of the issue.
I'm not sure I understand. Let me, let me, let me start fresh here. Councilman has concerns with the citation docket program. I personally disagree with those concerns, but just operating as the chair here. Councilman has concerns with the program. Those concerns revolve around identification of the, among other things, revolve around the identification of the race of individuals who are issued the citations as part of the citation docket program. The councilman just made a statement that it appears that we don't know the race of individuals who are receiving the citations. So that's the background. I'm asking if someone from BPD can respond to that statement.
Major Derek Luffler, referred to as the scheduling guru, not too long ago by Commissioner Worley. So when the officers complete an incident report within Axon, what we'll call the name card or people card, if I got that correct, that has demographic information that the officers complete in that field. So if an officer wrote a citation to that person, they would complete the demographic information within Axon. So there would be a way for us to look at that contact that that person has had with a citable offense to see the demographic makeup of those individuals. Does that help?
And I actually know we can do that because I gave you those numbers before in a different hearing a while ago. And it's on the citation, it's on the.
Well, my confusion is she just said when officers are filling out the citation, they're not putting anything on the citation related to their demographic. So that's why I'm a little confused, Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry, sir. I was explaining that that is what, when Ms. DeRoz was speaking at the State's Attorney's, at the State's Attorney's budget hearing, she stated that no agency has been filling out that box. That was a direct statement from Ms. DeRoz.
So, and Ms. Murphy's correct?
I'm just trying to figure out.
So the citation is different than what is completed in the Axon system as far as that? And yes, that's very common that the officers aren't putting the ethnicity information on the citation. However, when they, there is demographic information contained in Axon when they write incident reports.
So just to confirm, the information that is entered on the citation form is not inclusive of all of the information that is entered in the Axon system related to the arrest? Is that correct?
That is correct.
So, the information that is entered into Axon does in fact capture the race and or ethnicity of the individual receiving the citation? Is that correct?
Those fields are available for the officers to complete, yes.
Thank you.
So then I guess my logical follow up would be, what would be the purpose of the State's Attorney's Office? Backfilling this information using a different information, a different data source than what you have just spoke to? If you have this data, why are they filling this in later with a different source of information using the case search?
That's going to be a question for the State's Attorney's Office.
Okay.
Yep.
And we, we can look and see, because that could be one of the reasons why all, a lot of our citations are getting rejected. It's maybe it doesn't include all the information that's needed. So I'd have to look into that as the reasons for the rejections.
So can I offer as a, a do out here, a follow up here, that we will provide a written memorandum to the council that outlines what information is collected as a part of the citation process? And we will outline our process. And then it sounds like, not to play your role, Mr. Chair, there's also follow up.
Please, it's opening up soon, so go ahead.
Yeah, no worries. I'm not looking for that. But it also sounds like the, we need follow up from the State's Attorney because I also don't want to speak on behalf of the State's Attorney. I want them to be able to provide to us a response to the questions that you've asked, council member. But that will be also a follow up, is to have them to outline their process as well on the citations.
So, thank you. That would be fantastic. We will defer to the State's Attorney to provide their own response, so.
Claire, Mr. Chair, is that going down as like a committee request? I just want to make sure, I want to make sure nothing's lost.
So what I would, so we can do that as a committee request, but what I would ask is that you put that in writing. So send that to Margery and me. And, and someone from the council president's team will get that request over to the State's Attorney's Office. And then we heard from Faith what the administration will provide on behalf of both the administration and BPD. So we're good on that. And now Councilman Conway had a follow up that I'm certain is under thirty seconds, but he seems.
Less, way less than that. So, does the Axon report go to the State's Attorney's Office and can it?
Yes, for every citation that's written, the officer, the accompanying incident report is sent over to the State's Attorney's Office. Because that has the statement of a probable cause in the sense to support the charging language that's on the citation. So the State's Attorney's Office won't accept a citation without an accompanying incident report for that incident.
And that has the race?
That has all the person's information in it, yes.
Okay.
What would be incredibly helpful, I think everyone up here would be interested in seeing this, is an example of one of these reports with the date of birth and name redacted. There's no other PII on that report that would prohibit you from sharing that with us, correct? Like you don't put social security numbers or stuff?
Anything that we would, we would redact it so it could be shared with you.
But I don't want, I don't want a piece of paper that's covered in black highlighting.
Yep.
I, I just, I want to agree on what we're going to redact. So we're going to redact name and date of birth. Is there anything else that we can think of that should be redacted?
So their, a driver's license number would probably be on there, because we have to have some sort of acceptable ID. So we would probably redact something like that.
So, Mr. Chair, so what we would do is talk to legal.
Yeah.
So we would pull, we'll pull an example, we'll work with the legal department. They will tell us what we need to redact from the information before we provide it to you, but we will happily provide you a sample.
Perfect. So that'll be the actual PDF of the report that gets transmitted from BPD to SAO, correct? Correct. Perfect. Thank you so much. We're good on this one.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a question for DC NATO when he's ready. Thank you. Going back to my previous line of questioning, I'm curious about how the, which is not related to the earlier request, how when an officer or a member of the public sees that an officer is exhibiting behaviors of indifference, how is that reported and how do you all handle it?
So we have very, a multitude of ways you could report misconduct if you want to report it. I, I wouldn't say we have people that have reported indifference. I mean, I, I see indifference as sort of a cultural issue that might have taken place in the past. I, I know you're referring to a report that was done shortly after an incident, for which that was mentioned in the report. I, I wouldn't say we get a lot of those complaints. We get complaints about actual actions. But nobody has reported that an officer was indifferent to them. We do reviews of body worn cameras all the time. We have an entire body worn camera review unit that goes through. Like that does not come up. So what I would say is during training, many in-service trainings, roll call trainings, et cetera. You know, we educate officers to be respectful, to be alert, to respond to things. I think BPD from four years ago is far different than BPD today. I think when the commissioner goes out, drives around, when we go out and drive around, we see officers working. I don't want to get focused on one word in a report that might have been a response to the report as opposed to a complete investigation that was done to figure out what exactly did happen. So, but if, if somebody did report that, then it would get investigated. But I don't know of anybody who has reported that.
Well, I would posit, just like I did with that particular hearing, that I'm using indifference because that was the word in the report. And it was very much in there, not just mentioned, it was very prominent, it was very purposeful. And that's important because I actually think it's bias. And I said that in the last hearing. So I wondered, again, somebody reports bias. How is that tracked? How is that treated?
Right, that would go to the Public Integrity Bureau, that would do an investigation. We would have a report on that. That would, once it was, the report was completed, the investigation was completed, it would now go to the Administrative Charging Committee to review. As you know, that's a new committee that was set up by state statute in two thousand twenty-five. They would review it, determine whether or not somebody should be charged and if so, with what charges and what the penalty would be. And that would come back to us. Again, I haven't seen that. They've been in existence since two thousand twenty-two, July first of two thousand twenty-two. I haven't seen that. But it would be tracked, it would be investigated. All investigations that could be in must be investigated, regardless of what they are. So they all get looked at. Anything that comes in that has to do with misconduct of a member of the public must go to the ACC regardless of whether or not it's factual, it's not factual, it didn't even happen, it still goes to the ACC.
I appreciate that. I just, I want to say very quickly that it's, it's important that there's follow through on, on all of this. In that if indifference is the word that the police department wants to use for what was one of the reasons why what occurred at Brooklyn occurred, right? Then there should be like a category in the, you know, PIB that would investigate it. And that there's encouragement of officers to be reporting it. That's all I'm saying. So I will put that as part of my follow up with the other, with the other people that are here about that particular issue. If we're going to be reporting on it and utilizing it in a major report that was written and read all over the place, you would think that there would be follow up to make sure indifference does not occur. Thank you.
I would agree with you. I will just say that report was done in the aftermath with limited review of what we had at the time, not what we might have had over a period of time to then sort of look and make an analysis. It's like walking up to a scene and you see somebody, you can make a quick assessment of what's happening. But once you gather all the facts, you go through an investigation, you may find out other things were happening. And so I don't want to get locked down to, we don't have a specific category for indifference. It would be conduct of becoming, which would be the category. But we, even that, we don't, we see a lot of conduct of becoming cases, but we don't see a lot of what, what you're referring to in that report as indifference.
Has there been a follow up to that report to say whether or not that exists? I mean, you put it in a report, everybody sees it. Is there a follow up to show whether or not there's, it was indifference or bias?
Is there a follow up?
So while the investigation is completed, it is going to the ACC, so that will be the follow up when we get it back. The investigation.
About what had occurred, the officer showing indifference is now in the ACC?
Entire investigation, ma'am.
That you can't talk about in public. Okay, I got it.
Thank you. Okay. We're going to go back to Councilman Schleifer who deferred and then back to our normal order of things with Councilman Conway.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can you talk a little bit about the policy to take away vacation days for, for negative behavior?
Are you talking about in reference, in, in, instead of suspension, just removing their?
Yeah, yeah, how does that work?
So, again, keep in mind that we go through the ACC for half of our investigations, the other half go to the department. If you're, if you receive a suspension, the ACC has the ability to give you a loss of leave or, or loss of, loss of leave, just vacation days, or loss of pay. Also, if the agency does it, they have the same thing. I mean, we, we encourage on lower offenses, rather than take somebody off the street for two, three, four days to give them a loss of leave, because it still takes leave away from them, which is a financial incentive, but it leaves people on the street. If it's more a severe, more severe category where it's five days or more, then under the, under the matrix for the state, then those are loss of pay. So anything up to five days, we prefer to take loss of leave if possible. However, I will say under the current contract, a member who gets a loss of leave of three days does, is entitled to also convert that to loss of pay if they'd rather take three days off. So, but we do, we do encourage the ACC and our own DRC to do loss of leave if possible to keep people on the street.
So that's only in place when there's a suspension that would involve an unpaid leave?
So that's in place if there's a suspension of either a loss of leave or a loss of pay.
Gotcha. And is that practice done anywhere else in the state?
So that's in the matrix, statewide matrix, which is used by all agencies.
Real quick, the, what's the, the matrix thing you just said?
What is the matrix name? It's, yeah, it's the Maryland statewide matrix.
Can you just take twenty seconds and explain that to me, please?
Sure. So in July of, in July of two thousand twenty-two, a new statewide matrix went into effect. That matrix takes misconduct in law enforcement agencies across the state and makes sure that everybody follows the same disciplinary penalty. So depending on what the discipline is, there's categories, A through F. So the ACC or, which is the, the charging committee.
So it's, it's levels of misconduct.
That's correct. So A is minor.
Recommended disciplinary.
F is more severe.
Got it. Thank you, Councilman Schleifer. Sorry, back to you.
Yes.
I'm good, thank you.
So we had ones, we had one similar, every agency had one, but in, under the new state statute, everyone had to use the same one. So the state came up with one that's used across the state.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Councilman Conway.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I noticed in the performance measures for Criminal Investigation Division and for Police Patrol, the percentage of homicide cases cleared annually, that the target went down. So from two thousand twenty-four, our target was forty-eight percent, the two thousand twenty-five target is forty-two percent. And for Police Patrol, under the number of non fatal shooting cases cleared annually, our target is twenty-nine percent. Those, we often talk about homicides and shooting and the clearance rate for those together. I'm curious, one, how we get to those targets? And then two, why we see a reduction in the anticipated target for two thousand twenty-five?
Yeah, we, what we rely on is we look at the data from previous years to see where we were. And we always try to do an increase. We want to do better the previous year. But if we had a, if we set a high goal and we didn't achieve it, then we may lower it. I think, I don't remember what Steve said the homicide rate was. I think it was in the thirties last. I think it was in the thirties last year. So that's probably why we dropped it down to make it a little more attainable for our detectives. But we're shattering that so far, um, and I hope we double it, to be honest.
The three-year average clearance rate has been thirty-nine point seven over the last three years. So that's kind of where we come up with the, with the goal. Obviously, um, this year we're trending well above that with every intention to, uh, keep that going.
And Councilman, too, just on the non-fatal shooting front, um, even though it does say twenty-nine, uh, twenty-nine percent, we're obviously shooting for much higher than that. Currently this year, we're fifteen points higher than we were at this exact same time last year. We're at a forty-five percent. We've cleared more cases this year, um, and that's also with less detectives in the DDUs. Uh, we've put a lot of things in place that are helping us to gather information, to, um, identify suspects and pieces of evidence a lot faster than we did in the past. And so extremely pleased with the, and the progress we've made up until this point. Obviously, we, you know, we don't want to stop here, we want to keep moving forward, but, um, much higher than twenty-nine percent is what we're shooting for.
And this was, this, I'm sorry, sir.
Please, go ahead.
This was all part of the, the reorganization when I took over. When I, when I took over, I, we, we moved Lieutenant Colonel Herzog. He took over all of the district detective units. It was no longer the, under the guide of the district commanders or under the, they still are positioned in the districts, but the cases are, are looked at and, and overviewed by Lieutenant Colonel Herzog's shop. And it's made a significant difference. And it was the twofold effect was it alleviates the district commanders from having to spend the time as much to look at that. It frees them up to do more community policing because they have to be out there pushing their officers to do community policing. So it's one less thing they have to really push on because Lieutenant Colonel Herzog and his team are doing it with the district detective units and it's, it's turned out pretty well so far. And that's even, like he said, with even less detectives than we had when we started. So they're doing a phenomenal job.
For, for both metrics, do we know what the national, uh, rate is right now?
The national average for homicide, the last available data is two thousand nineteen, the uniform crime reports that the FBI puts out. Nationally, it's sixty-one point four percent, but for cities of similar size, which are five hundred thousand to a million, it's fifty-four point seven.
Well, you, hang on, two, two thousand nineteen is the last data they have available?
Yes, and they, the FBI puts that out, not, not BPD.
Where's?
It, it just takes time to, because it's every.
Five years?
It's every police department in the country that's reporting, so I guess it takes time to, to get all that. They're typically a couple of years behind.
Like use the sum function in a spreadsheet? Please continue.
And Councilman, there is no national average for non-fatal shootings. Typically, um, those are recorded and we record them a, as aggravated assaults as well. A lot of departments do count them separately, but that's not something that's reported, uh, to the FBI, um, as its own statistic. I will say this is the highest our clearance rate has been in recent memory, um, in terms of, uh, non-fatal shooting clearance rate. Typically, we, and we have been hovering right around that twenty percent, twenty-five percent range. So we are exponentially higher than we have been.
Yeah, I, I'll stop here, um, but I, I think it's worth considering, you know, as we talk about ourselves, we, we don't just compare with ourselves. Everyone is comparing us against similarly sized cities. And so, you know, I, I, I think it might be worth considering, um, looking at that national standard. And I know it, it is tough for us to meet and we have a, a number of challenges, but just, I think it's worth looking at. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yep, Councilman, and I would, I would be remiss if I didn't take this opportunity to praise my team and the work that they've done. Even outside of non-fatal shootings, just looking at all of our other categories that we, that we, uh, investigate in DDUs, looking at aggravated assaults, we're currently sitting at a fifty-eight point two percent. The national average for that hovers right around a fifty to a fifty-five percent. So we are over that range. Additionally, robberies, we're sitting right out as an agency at about forty-one percent. We've increased our clearance rates in every category from commercials to carjackings to our street robberies. We still want to do better, but the national average for that is, hovers between twenty-eight to thirty percent. It was a thirty percent in two thousand nineteen, the last time those were reported. So we're, again, exponentially higher in that category. And I think another category that, um, I'm really, uh, happy with because we put a lot of effort and work into this this year is our burglary clearance rate. That normally is something that goes neglected, not just by, in Baltimore, but across the country by a lot of investigative units, especially when we talk about, uh, shortages of detectives. That normally hovers right around ten to fourteen percent. We're sitting at twenty-five point eight percent. That goes into the work that the detectives are doing, feet to pavement. But also, I, I want to bring up our crime lab. Our crime lab, um, at this point is a hundred percent up to date, real time in terms of fingerprint, uh, reporting. And that's something that we rely on heavily when we talk about property crimes. And so that has paid dividends. We've, we've really been drilling down on that with our detectives. So it's really been a really good collaborative effort between the investigative units and our crime lab.
Yeah, I, I, really good to hear and I, I, I'm really proud of the effort that's been made thus far. I know we've been struggling with these numbers for years and we're finally starting to see them rise. So not this, not at all attempt to back down or anything. I think it's great. I think we should continue to shoot for the moon. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioner and DC NATO. I've heard some concerns among the Police Accountability Board that the cases are not being reported until sort of the last minute. And that's creating some confusion and just some challenges in being able to effectively respond to, um, you know, potential misconduct. What's going on with that? And can you all commit to working with the PAB to develop effective protocols so that we are not in a situation where this board is being asked to do last-minute cases and not be able to give the attention that each individual case deserves?
Yes, thank you. We are well aware of, of the issue going on with that. And it's the ACC that does the review, um, not the PAB. So it's the ACC. I will say, um, we work, we have a meeting with the ACC every week, the, uh, the chief over there to go through the concerns that we have. One of the problems we have, uh, one was we were sending things up for legal to do documentation. Now, I shall say, under the new statute, the process under the statute is we do the investigation, it goes to the ACC, they do everything else, right? They do charging documents, they decide what to charge, they, they do all of that. Because it was, honestly, Baltimore was late to the table getting that set up, um, and they were going to be overwhelmed. We continued the process that we do with our own cases that we send to our own department and still had legal, which is a solicitor's office, um, review the cases, do the charging documents, send them over there. If they wanted to use them, if they concurred and wanted to use them, they could. If they didn't, they didn't have to. That has worked, um, except because, one, the office over there, uh, is not fully staffed yet and they've had a lot of turnover. And so there's been some lost cases back and forth. But if that works, that has worked out well. Solicitor's Office actually just gave us another attorney to help with that process who's coming on board. But I would say that, you know, staffing is always an issue. About fifty percent of our cases go to the ACC. The other fifty percent do not go to the ACC. Of course, we are responsible for a hundred percent, so we have to do them all. So we have worked with the ACC, um, because one of their mandates is they have to watch all body worn camera, which is time-consuming. We know because we have to watch them all. So we have, we've committed to, uh, the new chief over there that we will at least be able to give them all the body worn cameras, et cetera, give them access so they can start going through those things, um, with the hopes that we can get the cases to them with the charging documents all ahead of time, um, within that thirty days. That is our hope, uh, that is what we're, we're working on doing. We have prioritized ACC cases to get that done. We have brought on six, uh, civilian investigators to help with that process, to make sure that that does get done. Of course, there's a training time, but we've, we've been very successful with our civilian investigators. We have three more in the pipeline to come on to help with that. So our hope is to get that all up and, up and running. You know, under consent decree, we have a mandate of, of to get cases done within ninety days. Honestly, with the staffing that we have, it's a possibility. We cannot because of the volume, we have about fifteen hundred cases to do. The ACC gets about half of those. So we, we just don't have the staffing to do it. But we are trying to prioritize them. We don't want to lose any cases by having them expire. One, one thing that happened under the new statute is there is no longer a, um, there is no longer a delay in the expiration of a case if it involves use of force or it's under criminal investigation. So that has certainly hampered us, uh, because now all cases, regardless of what the case is, must be done within a year and a day. So we have to get all those done. So we are working with them, the ACC, we're working closely with the ACC. We meet with the ACC almost weekly to talk about it. We have a, an entire person assigned to work with the ACC. We've set up, uh, emails with the ACC and BPD to shuffle questions back and forth. I will say one thing they did do when they set up, which we sort of gave them advice not to do, but they did do. Was it the people there now? Was it the prior people? They bought a different system than we have. And so all of our documentation that goes over to them, which they have access to, they have to then extract out of our system to re-upload into a different system. Instead of just buying the same system, would have been much easier, but they didn't. So that's caused some problems. And the way it was set up before with so many turnovers over there, many cases over there were lost that were never adjudicated by them. So they're missing, um, so we can take no action on those cases. So it is imperative for us as well to make sure this process works. So, uh, the team meets with them often. We're, we're trying to get a system in place, we're trying to beef up the staff, uh, add civilians to help with us to get the cases done so that we can send them over to them earlier. But again, our staffing is our staffing. That, that's, that, that is the hard part. But luckily, legal, legal has given us an additional, uh, attorney to help us with that. One thing we could do is just not do that whole part and just send them to them. They get them quicker, uh, but then they'd have to, uh, they have no legal staff either. They'd have nobody to do the charging documents and review the cases. The reason we like to do that ahead of time is our legal solicitor's office, but assigned to BPD, are the ones that have to prosecute the case, right? So they have to agree with the case to prosecute it. And if they don't agree with it, they can't prosecute it. So that's why we like to have legal review the cases to concur, have any additional work than they want to make sure that when it gets charged, they can actually prosecute it at a trial board. Because people do have the right to a trial board. And as I've told the ACC, we can charge a hundred people. If we can't convict a hundred people, we're just wasting our time. So legal has done a really good job of making sure they're on top of that with us. They've agreed to continue to do the charging documents for them, um, which it does take a little bit longer, but they have given us an, an attorney. We, we did speak to the CAO about this probably about four months ago and she worked with, uh, the solicitor to get us another attorney to help out with that process. With the additional civilians, um, and hopefully a few, a few more bodies coming in from detectives, you know, we'll be able to get the process going a little bit quicker. We also added an additional captain to help review the process, to get them to them quicker. So hopefully, hopefully by the end of this year, we will be in a really good position.
I appreciate that. For the good of the public, please explain the acronyms between PAB and ACC and the interplay between them. And then I do have a follow-up.
Sure, the ACC is the Accountability Charging Committee. So what they do is any case that is, comes out of BPD, uh, that is a, that is a board of five civilians that review the case, decide whether or not to charge the case. And they decide what, using that disciplinary matrix we talked about before, they use that statewide matrix and come up with a penalty. They then send it to BPD and we execute that. When I say execute it, we offer it to the member, they can either accept it or ask for a trial board. The PAB is the Police Accountability Board. That is a separate board, uh, for which all of you here, uh, and your companions, uh, nominated people to be on the board. I think it has seventeen, seventeen people on the board. They are overall, they overall review what law enforcement is doing throughout the city, just, not just BPD, school police, everybody else, and, and make suggestions back to law enforcement as to, uh, suggestions for the future. They, they're supposed to release a report at the end of December of each year with suggestions. That report, uh, was just released to the media probably about a month ago, uh, that had suggestions in it. So they're more of, and we meet with them, we as in the, uh, management, the commissioner, uh, we meet with them quarterly, for them to either ask questions, we give them a presentation, um, and they have sort of a little bit of a more connectivity to the public. The ACC's only job, uh, and it's a very important job and takes a lot of time, is to review cases, watch body worn camera and determine whether or not they concur with the investigation and what the charges will be and if they concur with our charges and if so, what the discipline will be.
I appreciate that thorough explanation. Again, I think there's a lot of confusion and frustration about why the process has felt, um, the, the process has not felt good to members of the ACC and the PAB as well. My suggestion, strong suggestion is have this conversation with them and work through as close as you can some improved protocols. I understand the staffing challenges, I understand the, uh, I, I understand everything you just articulated. Nevertheless, we have to get this right as a matter of, uh, justice for the public. And, uh, again, when I'm hearing fairly consistently from members of those boards that the, the timelines are not meeting their expectations, I think that is a problem that we have to work collaboratively on. And so I would ask that you work with them directly to address it.
Yeah, uh, we do meet with them every week. We have a conversation with, uh, they newly, uh, I think she's the interim chief, uh, Watkins. We meet with her and her team every week and before her, we met with that team every week. So we meet with them and we can talk about this. The, the PAB does not do cases, so I don't want them, I know they, they like to, um, they may be communicating with you about it. It's the ACC, right? They're the ones that actually do cases. And we've talked to the ACC and I would, listen, in a perfect world, I'd like to get them done in ninety days. I'd like to give them thirty days and give it to them and they'd be done. But, you know, as the commissioner knows and I know, we have a full agency of patrol and SIS and homicide and everything else to fill. We can't just dump a bunch of bodies there to do the cases so we can, so we can do that. We also don't control how many cases come in, right? A lot of those cases come in from the public, uh, about half our cases come from the public, the other half come from internal. And now we're doing it, we're self-assessing ourselves, right? So we're doing audits and inspections internally, which lead to cases, which we also have to do. Those don't go to the ACC. So as I tell the ACC, I, I, I fully agree and, you know, Chief Akane is behind me. We, we would like to have the cases there immediately. And so we do work with, uh, you know, Chief Watkins and her team. I think one of their problems is they're trying to get staff built up over there as well. So there's been some confusion, stuff we send, they don't get. So we fix that problem by having a joint email system that's, it doesn't matter who they hire, who they fire, they all have access to the same email system so we can get the flow back and forth. And, and we're giving them the access. Are, are they right to, to, uh, to complain? Of course they are, right? They should have the cases much earlier. I would, nothing would make me happier than giving them much earlier, but we need another, uh, we need, we need a lot more bodies to do that. So, but we are working with them closely, we have a really good relationship. I, she's on my speed dial, I'm on her speed dial, we talk quite frequently.
Understood. I would still encourage you to continuously improve the communication flow. Cause, and this is not coming from Chief Watkins, but from members, um, there remains concerns. Appreciate that and thanks for the thorough explanation.
Councilman Torrance.
Thank you, Mr., oh, sorry. Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question is more related to, again, back to staffing. Have we done an analysis of which shifts that we know that we genuinely have the shortfall in terms of staffing officers and by districts? Because I'm looking at, I've seen some commanders who look at the schedule, are predicting where they're going to have holes filling it. I've seen some where, not in my district, but not in any of my three, but they didn't, they had holes and the commanders I had had to help them with staffing some neighboring posts. So how are we, one, addressing predictability of when we're going to have shortfalls? And then how are we working across districts to support people when they do have them?
The, the ability, every, every district is short. My goal when I took back over was to get everybody to the same percentage. And right now I think we're hovering somewhere close to seventy. Most of them are in the sixties and some of the districts have to be built up. The goal, well, the job of a district commander is to ensure that their shift commander looks at their staffing twenty-eight days ahead. And he or she knows how many officers they need each of those days. And they put out the offer for overtime or they can use administrative people to backfill and to fill those positions before they get to that day. Because they can't draft unless the person, um, knows before the shift starts that they're getting drafted. So I hate drafting, I know I've said that a few times. The goal is to get rid of it completely. Unfortunately, patrol was so short, um, that we, we have to do it. And every, just like DC NATO said about, um, Public Integrity Bureau, every place is working short and about the same percentage short. Patrol's a little bit more. When we go through the staffing study with the consent decree and the judge, um, when Judge Bedar, one of the things he said is to, the, keep everybody on the, around the same percentage and that's what we're trying to do. But over the last couple of years, patrol has gotten, um, some districts are, are shorter than others. others, and some of it goes back to our district commanders have got to get field training officers that can train the people, because there's a couple of districts that can only send them so many people at a time because they don't have enough training officers. But the biggest thing is we look at it and try to measure it. That was part of the redistricting as well, was to balance the workload and midnight shift and baker shift, the day work, those have lower constants than Charlie shift. And one of the biggest things that I think we're going to do that's going to help in the beginning of next year is the permanent shifts. Charlie and baker shift, which is the day work and night work, will rotate every 28 days. Adam's shift will remain the same. And something else that we're going to eliminate for the time being is the early cars, which we didn't have enough staffing to do that. So I think all those things are going to help us to retain people. And in patrol, we're giving incentives. We're going, I can't talk about another one that we're doing with, with take-home vehicles. I can talk about that one. There's something, another incentive with that. But we're about to get 50 vehicles that were ordered through a state grant. The first 22 of those are going to go to officers who are crisis intervention trained and an FTO. They'll get their take-home vehicles and they'll have a vehicle to take. They live outside the city, they're going to have to remotely park it, but if they live in the city, it's going to be their vehicle. We've experimented with this for a while, and we've got to do it to compete. All the surrounding counties are giving take-home vehicles. Baltimore County, I think, was the last to jump on board. So a lot of those things that we're doing to try to enhance our patrol staffing, they do have a $2,000 incentive as well to work patrol. So anything we can do to have officers take a step back into patrol and help out, but hiring is the biggest.
You're going to need the microphone for that. I appreciate you. And this is Jermaine to your, right?
I'm just giving a heads up for my next round of questions. It's going to be really.
Oh, he's, he's, he's good. Well, go ahead, brief, please.
Yeah, I'm going to ask about, since we are getting local control back, how we can do some cost saving with sharing some of the actual technology usage, case in point yourself, homes. How do we combine some contracts to save money over time so we can start thinking about how we can use those resources elsewhere?
Thank you. Vice President Middleton. I'll go after the vice president. Go ahead.
Simple question. 911 calls that come in to, or come out of gated communities with private security, is there something special that they need to do to get attention from the city police coming in for a problem?
No, they're treated the same as, a 911 call is treated, treated the same way. Depending on what the call is for, it could be rerouted to 311, or it could be something where they're encouraged to do online reporting or use the telephone reporting unit, and officer may not respond. But for the most part, if you call 911 and it's something that someone that in a not-gated community gets an officer the gated community would, the private securities are just an enhancement that those communities pay for with the private company. It doesn't take away our services.
And I guess I would, and I have been encouraging, like a representative, go to the area's monthly meetings to also build that relationship.
Yes, go, go into the commissioner's monthly, I mean, not commissioners, the deputy, the major's monthly meetings because, and we, they're basically hybrids, and you get to know the, the major, they'll answer questions for you that you have about anything that's going on in your community.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I'm in volume two, service 622, page 233, police patrol. The number of positions has decreased from 1609 to 1446. In the second paragraph, there's an explanation of that. I think I understand that. Is it safe to say, my assumption is that those positions are still performing a similar function, they're just in a different service area?
Yes, the majority of that is going to be the district detectives, which were moved from police patrol over to CIB.
Good to go. And follow-up to that, under the performance measures, number of minutes on average from dispatch to arrival on scene for priority one calls? I know what a priority one call is, but if you could first, please define that for me.
Priority one call is usually the call that's in progress, like a shooting, a robbery, a burglary, something that's in progress that the officer needs to respond to immediately.
Got it. And in our actuals, in 20, we're 7.0 minutes, 21, 7.4, 22, 7.5, 23, 7.6. And then we had a target, the target increased from 23 to 24, from seven and a half to 10. And then the target for 25 is 10 minutes. Why is that?
That was, that was always the target. When Commissioner Harrison put out his, his plan in 2019, 10 minutes was always the, the target based.
Well, the target in fiscal 23 was seven and a half.
We changed it because we did so well against the 10, and now we're seeing we're dropping more and more cops, less and less people, less and less officers, so our response times are going up a little bit. Not significantly, like you said, it went from 7.5 to 7.6. So we just moved it to 10, and we're, we're going to eclipse that. And we, we'll probably drop it again next year because we're going to see that we, we've lost several hundred officers, and patrol was in dire needs of police, and the only way we're going to get it is recruitment. We could have did a better job with the predictor. We could have went, they want high, we could have went to eight or something like, something else.
I'm obviously gravely concerned that it takes seven and a half minutes to get a, a police officer when there's, on average, when there's a shooting. But let me set that aside. I just want to focus on the performance target itself.
Well, really quick, the shooting would be, if we pull just those numbers, it would be much lower than 7.6. That's, those are all grouped together for an average.
All part one. Okay, so put the, the actual aside for a moment. Just want to focus on the, the performance measure piece of this. So we've increased the target from seven and a half to 10. Can you, just in one sentence, describe for me why we've increased from seven and a half to 10 for our target?
I really don't have a good answer why we went up that high, to be honest.
Who makes that determination? Is that?
We, we allow the commanders that oversee those bureaus to make those decisions.
Okay. Director.
It falls, it falls on me. It's my fault. I should have dropped it.
Director Larson, this is, this critique is not specific to BPD. This is really overarching citywide. This, again, is a performance measure that I find meaningless and of no value, especially considering that priority one calls, the most severe of a priority, Commissioner, the most severe of a priority one call would be a homicide. What would you say is the least severe of a priority one call? A robbery?
I'd defer to one of my people in patrol, something, something like that, that's not, if you can jump in, Jack, what do you?
Just give me an example of the least severe of a priority one call where a human being is in the least jeopardy of losing their life or being gravely injured.
I mean, I, I would say maybe an aggravated assault because it comes out.
Someone pushes someone.
Right. Well, they would have to use a weapon. If it's, if it's an aggravated assault, something, something like that. Now, in the past, what used to happen, priority one, we used to use burglaries were classified up there, I mean, not burglaries, alarms were classified up there, and we, since we have moved those because there were so many false alarms.
Alarm, okay.
Yeah, and I would say too, like, if you had like an in-progress call, like somebody breaking into a car, it's in progress, that would be priority one, but there's not, you know, it's not an aggravated assault, it's not somebody, you know, actively getting attacked.
Got it. So if someone was, if my car was parked in front of my home and someone was breaking into it, and I called 911, that would be a priority one call?
Yes.
Perfect. Can the administration appreciate how a reasonable person would conclude that the most severe of a part one, being a homicide and someone potentially or actually losing their life versus someone breaking into my car to steal my Android charger because I don't use iPhone products, is a different level of severity and is not necessarily a meaningful measure of performance?
Yes, I, I hear that feedback.
Any thoughts on how we could make this performance measure more meaningful to?
So one of the things that I would, would suggest as we work to refine for future cycles, you know, one of the things that, that jumps out at me is just the size of the services budget in relation to the overall city's budget. So at $226.5 million, this is one of the largest services in the entire city budget.
This is bigger than every single agency in city government with the exception of fire, DPW, and housing, I think?
Correct. This is, I mean, in context, this is the size of the entire general fund budget I was working with in the city of Madison. So this is large. And so I think with that, we have to sort of rewind, why do we show performance measures in the budget? It's because we want to communicate to policymakers and to residents, how much is the service doing, how well is it doing, and is anybody better off? And so I would say, given the size of the service and sort of the, the breadth, like what you were saying, the breadth of the type of calls that are responded to under police patrol, this may be something where it would warrant having additional metrics in order to properly communicate the goals of how much are we doing, how well are we doing it, and are we better off? In order to sort of tease out the levels of severity that you identified with your example.
Thank you. That will be of paramount importance for future city councils as they grapple with the responsibilities associated with local control and creating more policy to dictate the direction that this department is going in. So I certainly appreciate the acknowledgement of the concern that I've raised. Thank you.
We can actually provide, we can break it down and provide the follow-up for each one of the categories. Because we, I can also tell you that we have, it's got the potential for escalation because I know in, we've already had a couple larceny from auto calls that have turned into homicides and shootings.
I, I appreciate that. I, I think this is an issue that is larger than one department or agency. And while the data is generally there, it's a matter of going through the exercise of aggregating it in a way that is useful for policymakers and for members of the public and advocates and everyone out there in the world. So you all track it, that's great. It should be included in the, the budget book, which again, isn't necessarily a critique of BPD or any other department. But I think it would be helpful in the future as you're dealing with future city councils, looking at this book and being prepared to delve into those things in, in much more detail. Again, that's, that's not a, a shortcoming of the department today, could be in the future, but this, again, is just not meaningful. But I appreciate the conversation around this, and I'm certain bright people like Laura and others can help figure this out to make it more useful.
Yes, sir, we will.
Thank you so much. Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I wanted to go back to something, Commissioner, you said earlier about warnings just broadly being a requirement under the consent decree. So if there are a requirement for the consent decree, whether that's loitering or citation, I mean, I understand there's a number of different contexts, not just focused on the citation docket. If, if it's not being tracked, then how is that information being reported to the monitoring team? Or is it being reported to the monitoring team?
The, the warning, well, we can't report it because we're not tracking, there's not a electronic way or an accurate way to track the warnings. So the citations are tracked, and again, this is something new that's a work in progress with the citations. So we've got to, maybe we have to figure out a way to track the warnings. But then what, what happens with that is then, when we, we do the warnings, then you're talking about an officer that just tells someone that they can't do something, and if the person walks away, the officer has no recourse, like you can't talk to them. They can just say, okay, walk away, and like, we can't capture anything with the, with the individual. And we get into the point of having a lot of data that doesn't have any, anything other than the fact of a warning that tells, and tells us who we stopped or why we stopped, we won't say why, but who we stopped, the demographics that you're, that you would be looking for, they don't have to tell us. And that's part of the reason why the citations, the demographics of the citation, they don't have to tell us. They can just walk away or give you the license and do the, do the information because it's not on the license either. So it makes it really difficult to get all the data that I know that you're, the reason you're asking the question is because they don't have to tell us.
Oh, no, I just, so just to rephrase, you, you said that it's, it's required by the consent decree to warn someone if it says loitering. Not saying that they need to lead to a citation, but if they're, if that's a requirement by the consent decree, how are you reporting to the monitoring team that the officers are actually giving out warnings at all?
There's really no, there's no way to report because we're not tracking it. So there's no way to report it because we're not tracking it data. It's all data-driven issues that we have with, that's the only thing we give the monitoring team. So it'd be something that, the fact that it's most, most effective, least intrusive, the warnings, and they may just walk by and say it's a warning. Now, we can track those on vehicle stops because that's something different, because they're actually pulled over a vehicle. But because we have someone who's doing a, and let's say an open container, and you tell them to dump it out, and they dump it out and walk away, then the warning was effective. But then if they don't, and we come back, we give the citation, and that's when we capture most of the stuff. But then again, if they don't tell us, we don't capture it even then. So it's really a difficult thing to do, how many warnings our cops would give. We'd have to come up, we have to figure out, and we'll try to figure out a way to, to do it so that we can track it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Snack time, sorry. Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was going to ask a staffing question, but I really have to challenge something that DC NATO, NADA said, and I just want to be clear before I, and I also have to apologize, I have zero poker face, so I'm sure people thought I was a little bananas when I respond, when I reacted. So the way that I heard what was said is that the, a complaint comes in, this is to your answer to the question that Councilman Cohen said. So a complaint comes in, the, the ACC does the investigation, and then there's the lawyer, there's a, let me, let me just focus on one thing. The, the, the legal team person, right, from the law department that is representing the police department, has to agree to the charges that, or the investigation that is occurring so that the, because they have to prosecute the individual? Isn't that strange that the PAB is trying to do, and the ACC are, you know, sort of holding the police department accountable? And the lawyer who is in doing the, working on this piece, is representing the police department, and then would have to prosecute the, I just need to understand this a little bit better because I know that the PAB- I just need to understand this a little bit better, because I know that the PAB has asked for their own counsel.
Colleagues, do we have concerns with extended?
He can answer my question. Go ahead.
Thank you.
Yes. And so the investigation gets done by the department, right, not the ACC. So the department does the investigation. When the department finishes with the investigation, we send it to legal to review and make sure that they concur with us, and make sure that we've done all the steps necessary to prosecute it. If they concur that we've done all the steps necessary to prosecute it, they actually give us a charging document that we attach to it. We send that to the ACC, not the PAB, PAB has zero to do with this, this is just the ACC. We send it to the ACC. The ACC reviews it. If they concur with BPD, and they concur with the charging document, they can then concur with that, render a penalty, a discipline, under the statewide matrix, send it back, we issue it. If the member accepts it, they accept it. If they don't accept it, they're entitled to a trial board. The trial board is then prosecuted by the attorney that reviewed it, who's going to be the prosecutor. It'd be no different than rushing somebody on the street, going to a prosecutor, saying, hey, here's my homicide investigation, state attorney's office, are you going to prosecute it? Yeah, we'll prosecute it. If the ACC does not concur, then they are allowed to not concur. They don't have to charge, they can add charges, they can do whatever they want to do. And then they still send it back to the department, we still issue it to the member. They still have the right to accept it or to go to a trial board.
Okay. So then what is the complaint in your mind related to what the PAB is asking for, which is their own counsel?
So again, this has nothing to do with the PAB, this is the ACC, two different entities, right? So we're mixing the two, they're not the same. ACC is the one that we're working with, they're the charging committee. The PAB is a committee made up of seventeen people that review law enforcement techniques, talk to us, and make recommendations, all law enforcement. The ACC is who PIB work with to do the, they do the charges, and they do the discipline for any case where the misconduct involved a member of the public. There's nothing to do with PAB, two different.
I understand now. So, but my understanding, and again, I'm just trying to clarify, because there's alphabet soup here of lots of different things, that the, when we established the PAB, it's called the Police Accountability Board, and misconduct complaints can go to the PAB, correct?
That is correct, and then they give them to the department.
That makes no sense.
It's the law.
I understand. But I think that there's got to be some way that they, because the PAB had been asking for their own counsel, so that they can, well, the civilian review board can do investigations, but the PAB does not have that opportunity.
Civilian Review Board only has investigative power on excessive force and restraint, not general misconduct.
Right, right. I think that there's just some confusion about some of this, but also, I still think that there's some opportunity to think this through a little bit, because I know that there's been some advocacy to try to deal with some of this relative to that.
I mean, that's all state law, that's not.
I understand, right, that's why I was asking.
So, just to intervene here, so the Office of Equity and Civil Rights, I think, is before this body on tomorrow, which is where the civilian review board, as well as the Administrative Charging Committee and the PAB all sit, and they're all managed and operated by OECR. So I think there is an opportunity to take up this line of questioning with that body. And then also, what you will hear more about tomorrow is the city's law department and the city solicitor serves as the counsel for the PAB. But we can, again, address that with the OECR.
I was planning on, thank you.
That is an outstanding idea. And Faith, if you could, because we didn't get a chance to spend time with Ebony, if you could ask Ms. Thompson if she could join us for the OECR? Yeah, for that hearing tomorrow?
Yes.
Because I'm certain, thank you so much, thank you. Office of Equity and Civil Rights, OECR. Let me just get my bearing here. Councilman Conley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the 911 Behavioral Health Diversion Pilot Program started in 2021, and it diverts emergency calls that don't necessarily require a police presence. Abel did some research and found that fifty-three percent of the 543 calls handled by the program resulted in saving 500 hours for the department. This is obviously a program that's reaping significant dividends. I'm curious if we have considered the continuation or expansion of funding for the program and considering accepting additional behavioral health problems into the program?
Yeah, I mean, we are looking at that. And I think it just goes back to staffing again, so it all comes back to staffing. So, I mean, I want to continue it, because it is working, so, and it will save us some money.
Do we have any details on what additional things we might be looking into, adding into the program, or? No, I, go ahead.
I asked him what he was waiting for.
So my former assignment education training, I was heavily involved in the behavioral health work. I'm a little dated, I've been gone for a few months. But I know the, I wouldn't say it's a pilot program at all, I would say it's the 911 diversion program. The city's committed to continue it and expand it any way we can. It's a commitment from the city, and it's really a requirement of the consent decree. I know they were, there was a group that the city was working with out of Harvard to identify different call types that were eligible for expansion. I believe that review was nearing completion, so there will be additional call types added. There was additional funding provided to the fire department or through BCRI to add a nurse in the call center to help triage certain types of calls. As we went through the program, we've learned there's kind of a lot of gray when it comes to those types of calls, and so that.
We, we're going to go into recess for a minute? Folks, grab your seats, please. Okay, we are back for Council Ordinance 24-0521, Order Assessments for Fiscal Year Ending June 30, 2025, Baltimore Police Department. Who is speaking before the 75 cell phones went off? Conley?
Yes, before I was.
Were you mid-question?
Yeah, I was in the middle of a question.
Why don't we just start it from the top?
Sure, yes, because I was brutally interrupted. The question was about the Behavioral Health Diversion Pilot Program that is now, as you explained, a permanent program. As far as the expansion, you said they're doing a study or a report? Or when can we expect to learn what we expect to expand into, or what might be recommended?
So I don't have the timelines available, but I can get that. I know they were nearing the end of that evaluation on looking at different call types for expansion through Harvard Governance Innovation Group. So that's nearing its conclusion. I think the important thing is just not only expanding 911 diversion, but it's enhancing all of our crisis response services throughout the city. You know, through the expansion of multiple crisis teams, so we can have them respond to calls that don't require a police officer to respond. So it's a holistic response to the crisis system in that way. And 911 is a component of it, and it's a very important component, so we can divert calls and give people assistance. And then, most importantly, just encourage people to use 988 from the very beginning, not rely on 911 when it's not necessary, and emphasize the importance of 988 to give mental health services.
Can I make that a request then, in a month? Either we'll have the recommendations, in which case you just share that with us, and if not, share an update on where we are with those recommendations? Yeah, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Cohen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Worley, I'm concerned about lack of follow-up to some victims within the city. You and I, not too long ago, discussed the case where it was a hit-and-run, and it was a very, very small child that was hit. Fortunately, there were no major injuries, but I think it was misrepresented by the officer on the scene as, or conveyed to the victim's family as not a crime. You and I had some conversation, the major as well. There, I think, has been subsequent further investigation into that issue, which I appreciate, but there's been very little communication to the family of the victim, who was very, very upset. Obviously, if you have a small child who's in a stroller and they get hit by a car, you know, you're going to be extremely upset. I am curious what messaging is going out to sergeants, to folks who are sort of at that mid-management level around consistent communication with victims? Because in that case, and in several others, the lack of follow-through, the lack of clear communication down the chain has been concerning.
Well, what you have is you have a young officer who made a mistake on that one. The follow-up, I did see lots of follow-up emails between the major himself and the complaint, and I actually was copying on each one. And he did, he did a number of things with the sergeant, he assigned it to a sergeant, to go back and pull cameras and pull everything. And even I, I think I explained to him, or he may have, that we may track down the vehicle, but if the person can't identify the driver, we can't charge anyone in the case. It was a hit-and-run, and we do, we will investigate those, but without being able to properly identify the driver, we have no way of charging the case for the traffic citation for moving. And then the lack of follow-up in general is mainly, I mean, I hate to keep going back to it, but the staffing shortages create issues that our cops are just going from call to call, and they're going to make some mistakes sometimes. And the supervisors, the officer was unsure, he should have just called for a supervisor and got the proper guidance. But sometimes we have really, we have a really young department, and the men and women are going to make some mistakes, and it wasn't done on purpose, and he corrected it, and we move forward. Anytime somebody's not happy, they can call, and we can make, the only way we can correct things is by getting calls and finding out we're doing things, did things wrong. But the culture in the department has completely changed. It's more customer service and back, it's to guardian instead of warrior. So the men and women are doing a fabulous job, but there's always going to be cases here and there that we can do better, and we will try to do that every time we find out that we didn't do what we were supposed to do.
And Councilman, just to elaborate on that additionally, not speaking to this particular accident that you're referencing, but just crime in general and the incidents that our detectives are investigating?
It was a hit-and-run, I just want to be clear about the terminology.
Yes, sir. We have it built in, so we're putting in built-in accountability mechanisms for detectives to make regular contacts with victims, so that they stay in contact. We're tracking that, we're working with our new case management system to make sure that we're making that as efficient as possible. Additionally, Deputy Chief Ritter has been building out our victim services unit, so there are certain crimes, right now it's homicide and shootings, but also additional crimes. If we make those contacts, and as we further build out that unit, where our victim services unit is assisting us with kind of making that contact with victims, keeping them up to date, and then navigating returning of property and other things that typically impact our victims.
Going to pause for a minute. Did someone apologize for that? Who was that? Oh, that was BPD-related? Do we, should we wait a minute, or? I don't know how those alerts on your, on your, your push-to-talk-next tells that you guys are using. For anyone who's a technology geek like me, if you haven't seen the BlackBerry movie, it's pretty good, yeah.
Well, now I have questions about the BPD alerts. Can I? I'm kidding, I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
Actually, what it is, is telling our officers to take positions for the, while the pending storm passes, because apparently it's pretty bad out there.
We'll give it another. It's raining where? It's raining in the balcony. Faith, you want to? Faith, you want to give Burkey a call? It's not the first time, it preceded your time with the city. All right, I'm going to, I'm just going to ask everyone to grab their seats except for Faith. We get back to, I'll give it another 30 seconds. As I stated several times last evening, this is God's way of speaking to us. Asking for council members to be as efficient as humanly possible with their responses, and also asking BPD to be as efficient as possible with their responses to council members. Okay, who had the last question that was Cohen?
Yeah, could I just, one more follow-up on this?
Before you, before you do that, and yes, you can, who was responding to Cohen?
I was, sir, I was completed, though.
You were, okay, Cohen?
Great. No, thank you, and I appreciate certainly the staff shortages, and mistakes will happen, and that being said, though, I mean, this is a budget hearing. BPD's budget is very large, and on behalf of victims, I think it's critically important that there is consistent, clear follow-up, that folks, you know, in the case of a mistake, that the mistake is communicated, that the victim then receives consistent follow-up and follow-through. And I know in this case that we're referencing Commissioner, that victim has not, I believe, heard from an officer in a couple of weeks. And I think that she should just understand what's going on in her case. And again, I understand the staff shortages, but communication is critically important, and that is all.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we're back to Councilman Torrance.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So one of the things that, as we transition to local control, that I think about is how can we combine some contracts? I know that every city employee has, most city employees have a cellphone, as well as your officers, and we both have separate contracts with Verizon. I'm thinking about ways that we can examine how to, in, as we circle and cycle into new contracts, how we utilize both contracts to generate one contract to save us money overall. It is something that I flag for procurement, as we think about procurement reform, a number of duplicative contracts that agencies have. I'm just looking at just operationally how we can save money.
Yeah, I can take that. I mean, we're always looking at opportunities to partner with other agencies. I mean, there's several contracts that we partner with, with Fire for Mercy and Behavioral Health Services, but we're always interested in exploring that and finding ways to reduce the expenses for the city as a whole.
Can you tell me of some opportunities? I would like to know about, I would like to see how you, how we save by you joining those contracts. I'll just put that as a request for.
Pause, pause. Okay, so the devices that keep going off, that's BPD-related? Can we, can we turn that volume off? Is that possible? Is that possible? That's not, is it? What's that? It's a, it's a BPD emergency, or it's, it's tornado-related? It's what? The microphone, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, yeah, I should've leaned for it. It's telling our officers to find shelter in a store or some kind of building as opposed to being in their car because of the severity of the storm. Did, did the duty officer just made that call based on what he's seeing out there? I don't, I'm, obviously, I don't know what he's seeing.
Okay. Torrance, do me a favor, rewind fifteen seconds and please continue.
I would like a brief on how we save by joining those contracts. That's it, I'll maybe make it simple, it could just be a simple meeting in the next month.
Yeah, yeah, I'd be happy to do that.
Mr. Chair, thank you, I did have one more question. The, how many youth are currently enrolled in the Public Safety Apprenticeship Program? How many have completed the program in the three-year, at the three-year mark of implementation for that?
Councilman, so for, for the apprenticeship program, it's broken down into, I think, three categories. The two I think you're probably most interested in are the cadets and the explorers. For the cadets, I will defer to Major Johnson, who can give you the numbers about where we currently are. I might chime in, and then we'll go to Deputy Chief Ritter on the explorers.
Good evening. For applications that we receive year-to-date for 2024, we have one hundred and fifty applications that we received so far this year. This is compared to this time last year, we had ninety-three cadet applications. We currently have six hired, actually, I just signed another approval today to hire another cadet. We have done some things to increase our recruitment efforts in that realm. The post-in for the cadet position was revised to where now they can have a road license, driver's license, and/or a state identification card. So that was just recently done by our team to make sure that at least we open up different avenues for them to join our, the police department. And of that one hundred and fifty, we do have a breakdown of where everyone is. I can tell you that the highest amount, which is fifty-two, is that majority of those individuals did not meet the minimum qualifications, and that's because they are either underage or over the age limit that have submitted their applications. The others fall into the category of a screening stage where during the screening process, they were disqualified. The fitness stage, which will help them now with effective June first, we revised our physical agility test standards, which mirrors the Minimum Rural and Police Training Commission standards, which will also help support some of the women who have some challenges with the previous physical agility tests. It also will help the cadets as well. So that is one of the things that we've done to improve that area. The next highest would be some of those individuals protest-changed and did not have a driver's license. So what we did was make an effort for our team to call those individuals back now that we've changed the classification, to try to re, get them re-engaged into the pro, into the process again.
And if I can just add to what Major Johnson has said, and, and please forgive me if I'm saying anything that was redundant, but of those one hundred and fifty applications, I believe, four are in the screening stage right now, and thirty-four are in the fitness stage. So we have some folks in the pipeline, that's very exciting. We're, we're very excited about that, I think we've really beefed up this program and our attention to it. And we're very excited that we have so many high school students that are, that are interested in it. In addition, the major mentioned the issue with the driver's license requirement. My understanding is, is that the administration has gotten a sizable grant from the Bloomberg administration. They are working with the, the city's innovation team, and what they're doing right now is they're trying to connect us with a, with a vendor, so we'd be teaching the cadets that are in the program how to drive, so that by the time that they, that they, that the program ends, which I believe is twenty years and eight months, something like that, by the time they reach that eligible age, that they can successfully matriculate into the academy. And then the last thing that I will mention is that we did receive interest from about thirty high school students recently. They're not accounted in that one hundred and fifty total, because they weren't eligible to apply yet, but we're keeping tabs, and we're gonna be following up with as many of them as possible. So with that, I'm gonna hand it off to Deputy Chief Ritter to go talk about the explorers program.
Mr. Chair, can I just have a really quick follow-up?
Yeah.
On the cadets?
Laser quick, yes.
Laser quick. So for people, for the folks that don't meet, meet the age eligibility, particularly those are, are too young, are we keeping them on file to try and get them in the pipeline when they are eligible?
Oh, absolutely, we, we have them, and so, and I believe that Major Johnson's team and recruitment are going to be following up with them as soon as they hit, as soon as we, they are eligible for graduation. So we're, again, we're excited about that. And then to answer one last question, I think you said how many have successfully completed the program? I believe, we just looked this up, but we're gonna verify for you, the report, I think, is due at the end of the month, so it'll be, I think, maybe you'll see it in black and white. But is that, that I think two thus far in this fiscal year have matriculated into the academy?
All right, and on explorers, we currently have forty explorers enrolled in the program. Thirty-two of those are part of the Patterson High Public Safety Career Path as part of their high school track. Eight are additional participants that are just participating in the after-school component of it, not part of Patterson, and they are in the northern and the south, in the southern district. This coming school year, we're talking with Baltimore City Schools about expanding to the other schools that have that public safety career track, like at Patterson. So that would be Dunbar, Digital Harbor, Vivian T. And so we're kinda looking to our expansion plan in that way.
Thank you, this is refreshing. I've been asking the same questions for the last three years, and we're, we're getting moving now, I'm excited about this. So thank you for really pushing this, I think this is a great way to get more young people into the police force and address some of these shortages, so I just wanna give kudos on that.
I got a, Ms. Ritter? To Councilman Burnett's question about the, the folks that aren't yet old enough, the, the requirement for the cadet program is at eighteen or twenty-one? Eighteen? So if they're not eighteen, do they all go in the explorers program, or not necessarily?
They can, they don't have to.
But, okay.
It's a possibility, yeah.
What is the protocol for the department's frequency of communication with those individuals that are not eighteen, that don't go into the explorer program? And I'm thinking from the perspective of a college basketball fan, when a college coach recruits a high school player, they have a frequency of communication.
So if they're in the explorers program, they'll have at least a weekly activity with the police department. If they're in the public safety career track, then it's even more regular during their school day. But is your question, if they're not in an explorer, but they're interested in cadet?
Yeah, do we, does someone touching them once a month, quarterly?
So what we do, do is the list that we have, a list that's generated, so those individuals who are, are nearing or close to it, the good thing is that our recruiters that go to the schools, they build relationships with some of the school counselors and other people, as well as the students. And so they do have their information, and they do follow up with them to try to make sure that as they're approaching it, they understand what the process looks like, so that we can get them signed up.
But do we have a protocol, like, hey, Jack or Jill, we're really interested in you, we know you're not old enough, we wanna stay in touch and check in with you and make sure you're doing the right things, and if you have questions, and, and being a mentor for you until you're ready?
So not to that extent, but what I will say is there is a lot of communication, and not just as a protocol, but just talking from the detectives and the recruitment unit, they are communicating with these individuals regularly.
Would it, would it make sense to put in place a protocol to ensure that we're checking a box that there's regular communication with these individuals? And is, if so, is that something the department would be willing to consider implementing?
Yes, we have the, we have the, and they can speak more about it, we do have the concierge service. And I'll let, I'll let Major Johnson get into that too, more what the concierge does.
So currently, we have two concierge, and so they help us through various parts of the process. So if the detective is waiting for documentation or information from candidates, they are the ones that do more of the handheld-in, they make the phone calls, they're texting, they're frequently trying to get to communicate with these individuals who we have had challenges with, and/or they have them more time to, to call the individuals and give the background investigators more time to focus on the investigations, the applicants themselves. So the concierge are, are retired officers, I talk to them once a month, we make sure that we have a meeting. I do purposely make sure that I meet with them once a month to make sure that if they have concerns or they have ideas, that we are listening to them. But they do a great job in contacting anyone that's part of our process, as well as some of the individuals who are not officially ready or eligible. They do communicate, will help us communicate with them as well.
And those concierge, concierge, concierges? Those, those two people, are they providing a, some type of written summary? Because those folks are on payroll, right? They're like contractors?
Yes, they're contract specialists.
Are those folks providing some type of report, a written report on some frequency to you?
So every interactional communication with applicants, we use ESOF, which is our, we, yes, and so they add it to the log.
You answered my question, thank you so much. Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had a question about, this is on Service 623 Criminal Investigation Division, page two forty, and it basically outlines the activities, so the, the type of investigation, I believe, right? And there's a significant cut to, and maybe this is just reorganizing and that's what I'm asking. There's a huge cut to robbery and homicide, there's huge cut to family violence, there's a huge cut to drug enforcement, there's a huge cut to target violent criminals. I guess you're reorganizing here, is that what this is?
Yeah, that's correct. We added seven new activities. In addition to that, we split up homicide and robbery. So homicide just by itself, but it is reorganization, and the intent was this, to provide more transparency. Before, a lot of this was just captured in higher activities like SIS, and there was a lot of things in there, so when we came to these meetings, we wanted to make sure there was more transparency to yourselves and also to the residents.
So you're adding a section, operational intelligence section, you're adding family crisis and SI, what's SIS?
So operational intelligence was actually in data-driven strategies and has moved from services. I'm sorry, I missed your other question.
The SIS, what is that?
So there's family crimes and SIS other, and I believe it's the missing persons people is the other.
Okay.
Oh, and special investigation section, I'm sorry.
Special investigation section, got it, okay. You're adding a child abuse unit, sex crimes unit, district, special activities, district section, homicide section, and citywide investigation. Okay, so eventually, these other sections will be, I mean, you won't have all of these, eventually you'll phase those out and, and fully fund these, these other ones.
Yeah, so the only one that's really gonna go away is if you look at the zero, that means there's no budget, so we're not using that cost center anymore. So that one is going to go away, but the other ones are just basically split out from a larger activity. So they're going to continue. It just provides more details for more transparency.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I was clear on what was happening, so, thank you, I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
And Councilwoman Ramos will be working with BPD to reduce the amount of reorganization that we see in the budget every year.
Is that a lot of reorganization that you see in the budget every year?
What's that?
Is that a lot of reorganization that you see in the budget every year?
I believe we had this same discussion regarding this department's budget a year ago.
I recall, that's why I asked. Councilman Conley?
Can I follow up to that before I ask my actual question?
If you are going to be laser quick in under thirty seconds, the chair would love to see you do that.
The question, question raised is, so six sixty-two, District Investigations, we've reduced that budget from one point eight million to less than two thousand dollars. I'm guessing that's reorganization as well. And this is on page two thirty-five.
Yes, so you'll see, so on District Investigations, so we had zeroed out that cost center. There were some allocations that were put in after the budget, mainly workers' comp and some other things that were added to closed cost centers.
Okay, so we're not, we're no longer doing that?
No, no, we're not going to have any expenditures in there, and we'll work with BBMR on the allocations that were put into other cost centers that we're not using to make sure they go into the appropriate cost centers.
Got it, okay. Now, my actual question is regarding our vacancies and recruitment. I'm curious, you know, we, we know vacancies are a major issue, we know we've civilianized and so on and so forth, what, what is our plan? Is it any different from previous years? How are we going about it?
Yeah, that's a great question, and I'll start off answering that, and I'll hand it, hand it over to Major Johnson. So on sworn recruitment, we've obviously already talked about the cadets. You know, we've shifted kind of our marketing campaign, not just to have a digital component, but to have a physical component too. You might have seen some of the advertisements on the electronic screens downtown. As you know, we have the hiring incentives, which now have just become standard for any police department. We've got the housing allowance, signing bonus, referral incentive, and student loan assistance, all together this year to date, we've spent a million dollars on those. You know, we've amended policies as well to allow rehires to get some of these benefits. And one of the things that we continue to do is, you know, start to evaluate our practices and our processes to make sure there's, you know, in the hiring process, are there any backlogs we can remove? The major was talking about how the physical agility test, the PAT, has been revised so that we can have more people pass that. And in addition to that, you heard the Deputy Chief of Staff mention the fact that there's three million dollars that the mayor has got from Bloomberg to help with recruitment and retention. There's also many initiatives that we put forward to help with female recruitment, you know, the lactation facilities childcare program, that's not just to benefit females, but parents in general, help with recruitment and retention. There's the Fem, Femtores Leadership Program, other leadership classes that we've been sending people to. In addition, on our professional size, staff side, you know, we've talked about our budget and how we're trying to add more professional staff to help with the sworn staffing shortages. So that's a high priority too. And we just had our first BPD hiring fair today. I attended myself, and, you know, we had people having onsite interviews so that we can expedite them through the process and hire them quicker. We have other opportunities that we're looking at. For instance, if somebody goes through the academy and they realize they don't want to be a police officer, how can we harness them? They've already passed the backgrounds, we've added investigators, we need dispatches. How can we keep them in a holding pattern, so to speak, so we don't use them, lose them, sorry? And so that they comply for these other opportunities in the agency. So we're trying to think about creative ways to retain people or recruit people.
That, that's really, I appreciate all the detail there, and I think it's really helpful. One of the things that came to mind as you were explaining those, and do, do we, for the positions that we hire that are civilian positions, that we're, as we civilianize, are we? as we civilianize, are we incentivizing those folks to consider becoming sworn members?
So, not directly that I'm aware of, and Major Johnson, I'll turn it over to the major if I'm missing something, um, you know, an example though, like at the hiring fair today, I mean, it was focused on professional staff, but sworn recruitment attended, um, you know, they even had some swag, and before they could get the swag, they had to go and they had to sign in, and, um, you know, so they are engaging in some of the things that we're doing, um, Major, um, is there anything I'm missing on that?
She asked if there's anything she was missing.
Yeah.
The microphone.
What I will add, um, and when she's talking about, you know, trying to retain, we actually had one of our, um, professional staff members who recently went through the phys, uh, the, the academy and now is, has been an officer for about maybe three to four, four years now, and she's actually in the recruitment section with us now.
Great, great, yeah, I would encourage you guys to look at that, that group of people, clearly have shown interest in this work, and maybe we can scale them up. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I am thrilled to see that BPD is utilizing the, uh, downtown central business district area of special sign control for public benefit, that's very refreshing to see, and one of the things that I envisioned when that program was legislated three years ago, thank you for utilizing that. Councilman Schleifer? Councilman Burnett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There's been a few instances, uh, Mr. Commissioner, where we've been informed, um, whether it's loitering or other sort of, uh, I don't really know how to phrase it correctly, uh, but there are instances in which officers have told property owners or victims that they need to, um, file charges with the court commissioner, uh, instead of, I guess, proceeding with, you know, filing a report with BPD. Can you sort of walk us through when instances that would be an appropriate, uh, request, uh, for someone calling, making a call for service?
Yeah, a perfect one is actually shoplifting, which we used to spend lots of money on having officers process an arrest and then go to court two or three times, only to have business owners or someone not show up, and then the case gets thrown out. So what we did with a lot of those, we made it incumbent upon the business owner that if we get a pro, if we get a shoplifter, we'll get you the information, but you have to go to the court commissioner and get a criminal citation for him to bring him to court, because what would happen, we would do everything, and then we'd spend all those resources, and then nothing would happen to the individual. Now, what, as far as loitering, that's a totally different, um, category, there, they can't really get a, uh, citation, I mean, they can't get anything from the court commissioner for loitering, but that comes into the constitution, basically, we have to be able to show that the person interrupted the free flow of pedestrian or vehicular traffic, someone just standing on the corner isn't loitering unless someone has to divert their path to go around them, so the officer actually has to witness that in order to have a loitering, so, um, even if they have the signs outside, other than, other than a liquor store, um, and then even you get into a gray area there because they have smoking areas, so it's, it's really difficult, but the, the most, the most, um, glaring example is the shoplifting, where the individual has to go get a, a court summons or criminal summons for the individual who was shoplifting, and we are starting to explore the option of giving citations for those, so that we can get them into the, the citation, onto the citation docket for the state's attorney, and so we're working with them to start doing that.
So, just as a quick follow-up, are there any higher level crimes in which that would be inappropriate, like somebody trying to break into a house?
No.
That's not something that, okay, and how often are folks, because we, we got a call about that, and I think I brought this up in a public safety hearing previously, where there was a, a situation, uh, where an individual was trying to break into someone's home while they were home, uh, officer shows up, the person's still on the scene, that constituent was told that they should go to the court commissioner to file charges, um, I'm happy to send you more information on that interaction offline, but just trying to figure out if it's only a certain type of crime in which that's appropriate, and, and I guess what training is provided to sort of help guide officers in those situations.
No, that, what you mentioned, that's an attempt at burglary, unless it was something, it could have been trespassing too, I don't know the specifics, but trespassing does, can, um, come with a criminal citation, but the, the officer should have did a little bit more on that, a little more of an investigation, um, because we don't write, we don't, uh, send people to a court commissioner for burglaries.
Got it, well, I'll send you some offline.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Ramos.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner, you, um, talked about, uh, a new division that you're working with and have a new person on staff to, um, address, uh, some of the juvenile, um, uh, issues that we're seeing, um, I wonder if you or she can talk about that a little bit, um, about what you're planning on, on doing, I do think that it's important that our young people, if they're touching the justice system, that they're, and this is, I talked about this with the state's attorney's office, you know, that they're given an opportunity to try to not do that ever again, um, but not in, in a way that, um, you know, messes up their entire future, so I'm hoping that you can talk about it, or your, uh, I for, I'm sorry, I forgot your name, but, um, looking forward to getting to know the staff to, that's doing this work.
Yeah, Deputy Chief Reynolds can talk about that, um, she came with an abundance of ideas, the way we can, we can, uh, enhance our relationship with, with young people.
There we go, good evening, Lisa Reynolds, Deputy Chief of Juvenile Booking and Services, um, thank you, City Council, I, um, in speaking, we know today is my one-month anniversary, so let's, keeping that in mind, I think, um, coming in, one of the low-hanging fruit was first kind of to see and get people communicating down at Juvenile Booking, um, that's where my primary office is, so that I can, um, assess really what's going on staffing-wise and make sure it's operating efficiently. Um, when I say to get people talking, there's a lot of agency partners in the building that operate in silos, and I think that, um, cuts into not only processing times, but as well communicating and outcomes of cases and services, to make sure that, that these youth that are coming there are getting the things that they need. Um, in addition, um, I think that it's important to work with the districts, which I've been out, um, and about going to talk to the majors, um, I've been to community meetings, just to kind of hear what, um, climate is there, um, working in the districts to understand not just, um, crime trends, but also, they obviously know who these juveniles are, and if they're, um, participating in risky behavior, that isn't escalating to the point of arrest at that point, I think that's when we have to start communicating with our other partners, whether it's DSS or DJS, um, where we can work together to see what the current services are, because if they're not working, how can we build those up, are there family needs? I think it's, um, important to involve the schools, so at some point, um, get there as well, because, um, issues just don't lie with the one child, there may be others that we can reach, um, in addition to that. Um, lastly, I've had initial conversations with Deputy Chief Ritter, um, looking at the utilization of current diversion opportunities, um, doing an inventory, seeing what the service providers, what exists, and then what training or, um, other needs for the department, to make sure that we're diverting youth that, that can be diverted from formal court actions. Um, as you said, and I agree with, um, it's important that we get the services that they need, um, not necessarily just focusing, um, solely on accountability, while that's important, um, it only goes so far if we don't help what the underlying issue is.
So, uh, just in your role with, uh, with juvenile booking, um, one of the frustrations, I think, for our residents has been, you know, if there's a, a young person that does get arrested and they're out in a couple of hours, and, um, what we could have used that opportunity to be able to get them into something else, not arrest in terms of jail, but in terms of being able to address the issue, um, and work with their families and have diversion programs, um, is that something that you're going to look at as to what the court commissioners are deciding, and how this is working, and how we can do a better job of, of that flow, rather than just a revolving door?
So interestingly enough, um, being on the crime calls and hearing, um, what the districts are reporting out in terms of, you know, the juvenile engagement in the areas, I did reach out to the state's attorney's office today to see if, um, they could send to us the outcome of what is happening on those specials dockets, as specials dockets being, um, the youth that are arrested and detained overnight, um, I think it's really important that, um, you know, the districts know that the juveniles are coming back out, if they're on monitoring, whether it be GPS or home detention, where, um, the behaviors, if they're out in the community, that they could immediately reach out to DJS and let them know, you know, we just saw this person out, they're, they're out past curfew, or are they supposed to be home? So I think, again, this goes back to communicating, not just taking your job to the point of where you think it ends, but reaching over the aisle and, you know, whether it's with our state's attorney's partners, DJS, um, you know, having them work with BPD.
And then, thank you for that, I'm glad you're working through that whole continuum, and look forward to hearing that, and as a follow-up, um, there are times when neighbors are observing behavior in their communities, I have two specific cases in my district, um, where, you know, it, we don't want to necessarily go the police route, we want to try to help the young people, but they are continuing to, you know, do what they're doing, and I'm hoping that I can reach out to your office to help us with figuring out what's the best way to move forward, um, with them, because I think that in this case, the family also needs some assistance, but there has to be that carrot and stick approach, um, and so, uh, hopefully we can, those are the kinds of things that we can reach out to you for, um, as well.
Definitely, I would welcome that.
Okay, thank you very much, I really appreciate it, thank you.
Councilman Conway.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner, uh, I know we plan to fully expand GVRS to the rest of the city by the end of, uh, the year, um, do you believe we have the resources to do that, uh, and how's that reflected in this budget?
Yeah, well, the resources that are there are the resources that are going to, going to remain there, um, we're, we're probably not going to add any more to it, but what they have is they have enough investigative units now, it's now, it's up to eight, um, teams, and that means we can pretty much keep an investigation in almost every single district, maybe two, um, in some others, so I think that's where we are, as, and as they start to take more and more off, offline, it's going to decrease the numbers, um, but the, the idea is hopefully to, once we do the GVRS study with the case study and the, the scorecard, and we identify those who are the problematic people, when we offer them their services, they take those services, and we can move on without the enforcement part, but if they don't, then we, we do our part, but we'll, we'll be ready when, when we go throughout the city. Redistricting kind of helped us get there already, because once we redistrict, we were only in the western and southwest, and we'd end up with investigations in the southern and the northwest, so it, it, we've already moved, and we've moved to the, um, the central and the eastern, and I think we will, we'll be ready when, ready to move back across the rest of the city.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Torrance.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair, I wasn't present for the state's attorney's hearing, but I have questions about the citation docket, mainly, have we created, and I say this with all respect to the duties of our officers, have we digitized what the citation looks like? Um, I, I equate it to when I'm being pulled over by the state, by the, um, when I'm being pulled over by a state trooper, if I get a citation, it's printed for me, I say that because, two parts, I had a constituent who said that they got a citation, but they could not make out based off of the handwriting when their court date would be, right? These are small things that could equate to a bench warrant for someone missing the court date, and it's human error, or, I just want to make sure that we create a system in where we digitize it, so we can not only track the data for our consent decree efforts, but also make sure that we're not overpolicing and underpolicing in certain communities, and that we can actually look at that data and be very specific and intentional about it.
We can, we can, we, we can print them out on E-Tix, but we have no way, it, because it's part of the court, um, we can't send them electronically, from what I'm told, um, but we can print them out and then send them, send them basically by, by mail, or give them to the state's attorney's office, but there's nothing within the state that's, has an electronic system that flows, that flows that allows us to do it online and then shoot it right to them, from what I'm.
I just wanted to add to that, um, is that the conversation that we've had with the state's attorney's office, that we think that the sort of the more global solution to this is to advocate for the state police to expand E-Tix to these types of citations, um, that's probably down the road, I don't think it's going to happen next month, or, um, you know, maybe by the end of the year, but, I mean, I think that, that's, that's where we think we ultimately need to go.
I agree bec, I agree, because in order to, and I'll just be transparent, I still think about the fact that even looking at your numbers in terms of stops, we're more likely to find a gun on a person that is not black in a patrol stop, in a, in an actual car stop, right? The numbers are still saying that, so I just want to make sure that while we are trying to address crime and continue to lower it, we be mindful of how we use staff time, as well as where we're doing enforcement, I, and I, and I say this in all intentional purposes, because I see reporting where people are just looking at black people being policed, because, or trying to encourage people to police black people for just merely existing in Baltimore City, where I see no issues where we wait seven hours to find one fight, instead of talking about the mischaracterization of how crime is up when it's actually down, so I just want to make sure that we are actively figuring out ways to collect that data to fight against that narrative, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Schleifer? Burnett? Okay, we're thinning out, very good. Ramos?
Um, yes, I, uh, was looking at, um, some of the services, like Service 816 Special Operations with some of the salaries, like Office Support Specialist is low, maybe that's part-time, or is that a full-time salary? That is a full-time salary?
I'm, I'm sorry, what position? I think I had the position, and I think I know the answer, but I just want to clarify.
Uh, Page 264, Special Operations Section, Office Support Specialist 3.
Yes, um, you have picked up.
And just for the public's, uh, knowledge, the salary is $37,968.
Yes, um, we actually have, um, been working with the Labor Commissioner on a solution with this, and our partners with DHR, um, we actually have, um, 25 vacancies in that level of position, and the reason why is the salary, um, and the expectations of the job duties, um, as a result, we're trying to find creative solutions with our city partners, but in the interim, we've been working with a staffing agency with Robert Half, paying more money than that to, um, get people who can perform these positions, while we work on correcting the salary.
So, at least you're aware of it.
But thank you for pointing it out.
No, I, no, that's not, that's not even a livable, that's just not, I mean, it's a little over 15, an hour, but it's still not, um, acceptable at all.
Yep, so Councilwoman, um, this is actually, uh, not just a classification that is specific to BPD, it's actually an, uh, classification that's enterprise-wide, and it's one, um, that we would be looking to reclassify, it's an older classification.
So I would probably, I would probably surmise that this is one of the things in the context of the salary study, right? Is the salary study applied to the BPD?
Yeah, it would apply to this position because it's a cub position.
This is a cub position?
Yeah. And so the salary study looked at, um, non-sworn positions across the city.
Non-sworn, okay, that, that's a good clarification, that, um, the salary study is included in, in BPD, but, when that gets implemented, it's not now, um, that it's non-sworn, um, okay, that's, that's super helpful and added to my, my question, that's my one question for now.
Conway.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, um, the Office of Legislative Audits did an overtime audit for the department, um, do we have an update on any progress, um, from the reforms recommended in that report?
Yes, okay, sorry.
The recommendation.
Implementation of the recommendations.
Yes.
Yes, um, so, um, I, I just want to point out, the, um, audit covered the go-live of Workday, um, so some of the data in the audit was skewed, um, but some of the, um, recommendations we agreed were very good recommendations, and we still have progress to make, um, you know, from such a, a big change to the payroll system, um, so we have, um, gone live with the overtime dashboard, um, which provides a user-friendly tool for command staff, and even supervisors to look at the overtime, to look at all the compliance reports. and even supervisors to look at the overtime, to look at all the compliance reporting, so they can see if somebody's violated the 32 hours, who are the higher earners of overtime. In addition, you know, during the audit, we had staffing shortages in our audit team. They have been able to hire those auditors and start beginning and those audits and developing the audit plan. And part of that process is going to include those PIB referrals. We have amended the payroll manual to put in some best practice language that was recommended from the audit. In addition to that, we have put in there a dedicated 30 minutes for supervisors to go through the payroll compliance checklist for all of the policies and validate that none of their employees have violated those policies. And then on the secondary employment side, we have begun the outsourcing to our third party, ODM, for them to manage secondary employment, which resolves some of the issues in the audit that were discovered around secondary employment. And then the final issue, I believe, was the wide loads, and a policy was put in place to resolve that finding.
Very good. Would you be able to provide those updates in writing, just so we have a recommended?
Yes, I'll be happy to.
That'd be great. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Schleifer. Burnett. Oh, no, no, no. Oh, you guys are good. Torrance.
Mr. Commissioner, you probably didn't tune into my conversation with school police last night. So one of the things that I would like to, just on the record, have a commitment from you is that department is, I'm gonna find it, the right word for it. I use problematic today. Very problematic. I will, for the public's consumption, my issues with City Schools Police Department is twofold. They have officers who don't know how to enforce peace orders when they're violating. They have lacked the basic training to actually do the basic fieldwork that they were trained in the police academy for. We have officers who, for a bad, lack of better words, don't actually know that they can enforce laws based off their MOU if it's seen in their site, given their concurrent jurisdiction they have with you. What I would like to do in the next couple of months is work with you and your staff on identifying areas of need for the police department there, but also articulating what their full police powers are. If you see a crime, you should stop that crime if you're moving with 23 officers throughout the entire city. Or the fact that if you see a larceny, you should probably stop it. Just being transparent, because while they're getting new leadership, and I don't know what that new leadership is going to look like, they are far behind on their in-service and training for their officers. And I would like a commitment from BPD to figure out ways that you can work to either train the trainer or support them, because I think about the fact that the entire school community was in jeopardy because an officer that was three years removed from the police academy did not know how to write a warrant for a violation of a peace order.
Yes, sir, absolutely. We, we, we asked your helping in the search for their new chief. I know the, Gary Peterson, the person who's doing the search, has, I've communicated with him several times. And then we will communicate with the chief when they come in, and we'll continue to communicate with Major Coleman and try to get them whatever they need. We'll work together with them.
Thank you. And then also, just so that I have something to send to the School Board of Commissioners, because last night I found inaccuracies in public documents that City Schools Police said. They indicated that they participated in several meetings with BPD, and from my own investigation and talking to your staff, they did not participate. In addition to that, they are inaccurately saying that you donated Axon cameras to their police force for their pilot program. And I would like to have written statements from BPD saying that, so I can present it to the School Board of Commissioners to ask for an audit of School Police Department.
Wait, you're asking for BPD to do an audit of?
No, confirm inaccuracies so that the internal audits of the Baltimore City School Board can begin its own investigation into their police force.
Say, say that again for me more slowly, please.
So the request is to confirm inaccuracies stated by the Baltimore City School Police Force so that, that the city knows knowingly are false, so that we can have the Baltimore City School Board's Internal Audits Office begin an independent audit of their police force as a request from this council to make sure that there's accountability on that side.
Okay. I'm not, okay. So you want BPD to, what's the thing you want BPD to do?
I'll put it more, I'll put it more or less adequately. Confirm that City Schools Police lied in a public forum.
No, 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 I got, got the public.
So, can I help here?
Please, I need help.
So I think Councilmember Torrance, you asked specifically about the donation of the body-worn cameras to, to City Schools Police, right? They stated last night that they, that they donated those cameras. You want BPD to verify if they actually made those donation, that donation to the school?
Correct. And that BPD did perform two trainings, that City Schools Police did not actually tell their board.
Okay, you got it.
Okay. So the request is for BPD to confirm in writing that they made a donation of?
They did not make a donation. To be clear, they did not make the donation.
Yes.
You want in writing from BPD to convert, to confirm?
That no such donation was made to City Schools?
Whether or not there was a transaction related to body-worn cameras? Is that fair?
The word is donation. That was the words used by their chief of police.
Okay. So let me, let me reword this. So we want BPD to confirm in writing the specific nature of any transaction that occurred related to body-worn cameras between BPD and Schools Police? Is that correct?
If one occurred.
Okay. All right, let me start from the top. BPD, Tony, you ready? We want in writing from BPD, the specific nature of any transaction of body-worn cameras from the ownership of BPD to the ownership of Baltimore City Public Schools Police. That's the first part. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then the second part was?
Confirm the two trainings that they performed for Baltimore City Schools Police for an Axon cameras.
Related to the, okay. So the nature of any transaction, as well as any training that was provided by BPD to City Schools Police. Is everyone clear on that? Excellent.
As well as guidance that was provided as well, because it's my understanding that they were provided guidance on the use of set cameras.
So, so that, that guidance could have occurred either through training or in writing. So I'll, I'll fit that under the umbrella of training. So the nature of the transaction and anything related, how to use this gadget or widget.
Yes, sir. Got it.
Outstanding. Good?
And to be exact, Axon, because that is the exact brand that City Schools is actually asking about.
Okay.
The lawyer in me says be specific.
Well, the, the more specific you are as you tailor your question, the greater the likelihood that you will limit getting the information you want from these folks. But you tailor it as you see fit. But I think we've captured the nature of, of, of the intent of the request.
Yeah, we, we only have Axon cameras.
Very good. All right. Okay. Schleifer. Burnett. Ramos. Conway.
Oh, you guys just put pressure on me. All right, I'll stop.
I'll come back to you if you want.
No, no, no. I mean, I, I just, because I'm the only one asking questions.
I have a ton of time on my hands.
I will stop, I'll stop after this. Last question for me, and we can have a conversation later, Commissioner. For the citation docket, last I heard, there were 58 citations that were kicked back because they were legally insufficient. Did we ever do an, an analysis and a breakdown of why they were kicked back and we're going to share that with folks in roll call?
So we did do an analysis. Part of the problem was the way, the language the officers were using on it, et cetera. So what we did is we came up with a, an app that we actually put together to show them exactly how to do it step by step by step. We pushed that out, did trading on it, so we're hoping, moving down the road now, they're going to have access to that. So we'll reduce the error rate that we're having.
Just to add, the most common reason is not having the right charging language. And the importance of the app is there's the exact charging language that they're supposed to add to the citation that makes a, as a quick reference for them.
Got it. And do we have an estimated timeline for better implementation of this process?
So the, if we've done roll call trainings with the assistance of the state's attorney, I think we've done all the districts at this point. If not, that's close to conclusion. At the roll call training, they're introducing the app. The app has been disseminated through our normal processes as far as introducing that agency-wide. And then there's been other guidance given over the past few months as well.
Would you guys be able to provide me an update 30 days after the execution of that app with how things are going? Just so we can stay on top of it?
Yeah, we can, we're tracking the rejection rates, so we can get an update and see what the trends look like.
I'd appreciate it. Thank you so much. Now go to bed, guys. All yours, Mr. Chair.
Great. All right. Schleifer. Burnett. Ramos. Conway. Torrance. Where's Shannon Sullivan? Is she still, or Shannon Sullivan, Shannon Conway? Where? She left. Okay. I wanted to thank a couple people, Commissioner. One, I want to thank Andy Smolian and Aaron Murphy and Shannon Conway. They do an outstanding job of representing you and the department. And while they don't always give us the answer that we're looking for, or the answer that we want, they are wildly responsive and competent and professional. I also want to take a moment to thank the majors in the Central District, Paul Sincheck, and the Southern District, Jason Bennett, and the Western District, Natalie Preston. Those majors are incredibly responsive and make my job and, and the job of everyone that I work with in our office in the 11th District a little bit easier. I appreciate their responsiveness and their professionalism and the extent to which they trust us to share information. They have been nothing short of a pleasure to work with. So thank you. Thank you to everyone who's here with us tonight through this marathon, including the hurricane or whatever cyclone tornado warnings. And lastly, I want to thank all of the officers in BPD who do a job that is thankless and is wildly undercompensated and that most of us don't have the stomach or bravery to do every single day. It is deeply appreciated. We're now in recess until 9:00 AM tomorrow.
Thank you, sir.